The north is distinctive landscaping and property to the south, right across the road there. How do you do the laser?
Did you have a mic?
The clapper works too.
Alright, so distinctive landscaping here. This is Ocean Hill subdivision, Ocean Hill 1. Uh, this is an existing single-family dwelling. Down here is Corolla Classic Vacations and to the south is Wayne's Store, just to kind of orient you to the site. So the parcel is currently zoned SFO, uh, single-family outer banks, and has been zoned residential since 1970. The parcel was created as part of Ocean Hill 1, uh, Ocean Hill Section 1 subdivision. So it was actually created as part of this subdivision here, as well as this parcel here was also created as part of Ocean Hill. The parcel is designated as full service within the Corolla sub area. In 2004, the board heard a request for a traditional rezoning to general business. At the time, staff supported the request but had reservations about a conflict between the proposed zoning and the restrictive covenants of Ocean Hill that restricted all lots to residential purposes only. The planning board at that time recommended approval, however, the Board of Commissioners continued the request and directed the applicant and the opposing parties to work on a mutual solution, and the request was not reheard by the board. So since 2004, actually in 2012, there was filed a declaration of withdrawal of lots 112 and 113. That's the subject property is lot 112, and that's lot 113. And the declaration of restrictive covenants was recorded to restrict uses of those withdrawn lots. And the copy of those, the declaration and the restrictive covenants are in your agenda packet. And the uses that the applicant is proposing of the property are consistent with those uses listed in the declaration of restrictive covenants. Here's a general conceptual site plan. You can see the proposed building. Access is coming off of Coral Lane. There's proposed stormwater landscaping, and the building is pushed out towards Ocean Trail. There's some more landscaping out in front and a sidewalk connection is proposed. So these are the proposed uses. The, my understanding is the, the, what they would like to do is retail sales and professional offices, but they do not own the property. You still, you still, you do or you don't? Okay. They don't own the property. They have the property under contract, and so they are also requesting these additional uses to be allowed on the property, consistent with the declaration of restrictive covenants.
Jenny, the 2017 declaration of restricted covenants does allow for what they're saying, is that right?
It allows all those uses, and there's a, I believe there's a couple uses allowed that they're not proposing. I think Funeral Home was one of them. Now, these, these uses, the, the language may not be exactly what the language is in the declaration, but these uses match our ordinance language.
Okay.
So, uh, I'm just gonna read these uses out loud so we know what they're, they're asking for.
Okay.
Uh, animal grooming, animal shelter, vet clinic, fitness center, indoor recreation, convenience store, adult daycare center, childcare center, museum, library, retail sales establishments, nursery production, business and sales, professional services, restaurant with no drive-through with indoor or outdoor seating, specialty eating establishment, vocational or trade school, uh, single-family detached dwelling or family care home. A community meeting was held by the applicant on February 24th of this year, and the subjects of discussion at that meeting included stormwater, drainage and access. And a meeting summary is provided in your agenda packet. The meeting summary was provided by the applicant as part of the submittal. They still are very much in the conceptual phase. They do not have specific building plans yet for their project. And initially, and you'll see in your staff report, uh, in your packet, uh, let's see, page, page 124 of your packet, that was the initial building concept that they provided. But after the planning board, uh, they've, they've submitted these updated conceptual drawings of the building. So you can see that the drawings proposed are actually are in the, in the village and have the Corolla Village style with, uh, window sizing, front porch, wraparound porches and things like that are consistent with the Corolla Village style. Again, uh, these are the, the proposed zoning conditions and staff proposed, uh, conditions of approval. Prior to land disturbance or construction on the property, the applicant is required to submit an application for site plan approval. Staff does suggest that the board carefully consider each of the proposed uses and potential impacts to determine which uses should be included in the conditional zoning. The reported plat states that the subject property shall not have an entrance on Ocean Trail, and there are existing wetlands within the Coral Lane stub. Uh, the board may want to consider a condition regarding required access. Also, the applicant has proposed hours of operation consistent with normal retail, surf shop and professional office hours. The board may consider setting hours of operation if necessary for compatibility or to mitigate potential off-site impacts. Again, staff did request that the applicant consider design elements similar to Corolla Village architecture, and that they have amended their elevations to do that, and also the, the planning board and their recommendation added that condition that, uh, architecture should be similar to Corolla Village architecture.
Jenny, how big, how big is the property?
It's .46 acres. Again, with the, the rezoning, uh, the board should adopt a statement of consistency and reasonableness, and staff suggests that the conditional zoning request is consistent with the 2006 land use plan, uh, full service designation, and it's consistent with, uh, these commercial development policies of the land use plan, CD 4, CD 5 and CD 6 regarding highway-oriented commercial uses, uh, in office and institutional development. Also, it's compatible, um, it's consistent with policy CD 7 regarding attractive environmentally beneficial landscaping to be provided and buffering and design features to be employed on site. It's consistent with community appearance, uh, policy 1, the important economic tourism and community image benefits of attractive functional major highway corridors throughout the county shall be recognized. It's consistent with, uh, economic development policy 1, that new and expanding industries and businesses should be especially encouraged that diversify the local economy, train and utilize a more highly skilled labor force and are compatible with the environmental quality and natural amenity-based economy of Keratuck County. And policy, special policy for the outer banks, policy 2 regarding clustering commercial. And staff suggests that the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it allows commercial development to occur in a centralized area, and the proposed uses are compatible with surrounding residential development and landscaping and buffering will be provided. And the request recognizes the important economic tourism and community image benefits of NC 12, the major highway corridor in Corolla. And the planning board and TRC recommend approval subject to the proposed conditions. Again, the planning board did add the, the condition that the architecture should be consistent with, uh, Corolla Village architecture.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Any questions from Mr. Turner? I don't have any specifically. Do you know if they have anyone here to speak for them?
They do. The Hurleys are here, and Warren Edes from Quaivell.
Okay, alright. So I'll wait him on up and then we'll move into the, uh, public comment section.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Warren Edes with Quaivell and Associates. Jenny's done a good thorough job of laying this out for you. The one item that I just want to bring up is that the access from NC 12, I think we're okay with the way we've shown it. That access was suggested by, um, through the process through the county, um, but the Hurleys, you know, the, the whole idea is that you don't restrict yourself when you, when you buy a property, when you try to do some rezoning like this. The more restrictions you put on yourself, the harder it could be in the future. They don't plan to do any construction right now, but, you know, they would like to preserve that access off of NC 12 if at all possible, but, I mean, we're okay with it as it is. That's what we showed to the planning board, so I just want to kind of throw that in there. It's something maybe we talked about real briefly, but, um, if you've got any other questions about the site plan, we've demonstrated that it can work. We've laid out the septic, the stormwater, pedestrian connections, et cetera, all the widths for getting fire apparatus in and out of the property, so, um, we're comfortable that it can work the way we're showing it. But I would add that, you know, an access, just preserving that right to be able to access from NC 12 is, is something that they would really like, but it's not essential to the approval.
So right now, excuse me, right now, the proposed sketch plan, I guess, is coming off of the Coral Lane stub, basically, right? And they would like to leave open the option to just directly turn in from NC 12?
Correct. Or, or to actually come in off, I mean, there's, can't see it on that.
Pot Lane.
The aerial showing the access coming from the adjacent landscaping business.
Mm-hmm.
So that, you know, preserving some ability to, to do some sort of vehicular connection other than just off of Coral Lane stub.
Okay. And you came about this because staff proposed this?
It wasn't just staff. I mean, it was, some, some of it has to do with the shape of the property.
Yeah.
But it was encouraged. I think it's good planning to try to limit the number of cuts off your main road, but that is, um, it's a general rule of thumb, but when you're buying a property, you'd like to preserve your access.
Right. Yes, sir.
A point of clarification, I asked the county attorney to make sure. Because this is a conditional zoning, the sketch plan does hold authority, so you won't be able to go to Highway 12 if you only show the access off of Coral.
Okay. And you mentioned distinctive, so did you, or, uh, you, have you talked to them about a common entry or something? Is that?
They've had discussions with them, and I, I think that in our, either in during the planning board or in the write-up, I mean, it discusses that we've expressed that we would like to keep that option open for some other type of vehicular connectivity. So I wasn't sure if, yeah, we've got a, a conditional plan in front of you, but if...
So we're gonna vote on what you've shown us?
Right.
With the driveway as the deal?
But just like with the architectural information that we submitted, I mean, that changed since the planning board, and you're, you're verbally saying that we need to meet that condition, so I didn't know if there was a way for you verbally.
Well, and, and I think, uh, so if you, you guys haven't gotten to the point of the, this is just kind of conceptual at this point in time. If they, if you wanted to come back in once you finalize, we could go through this again, could we not? So if you find, so right now for tonight, let's get your conditional zoning change as presented. If you guys find going through this process as you work through this property that does make more sense to come off of NC 12 or with the Pattersons, the Patterson Home Remodeling Distinctive, um, then you could bring that to us and change it again legislatively. So, um, in, in the interest, I think, tonight, you probably are better served to get this done if you can, and then if you find that something better works out, we can, you know, we can work through that as necessary, since they're not obviously in a time crunch now and might have been before, but maybe not so much right now.
Yeah, they've been, no one's fault here, but we've been patiently waiting since January.
Certainly not the Hurleys, so, okay. Question?
I mean, I, I mean, like far as the, the distinctive, there, I mean, those lots are adjacent, I mean, if they had some kind of relationship, I mean, we couldn't stop, or, you know what I'm saying, if that was the future, if distinctive said they can cut through a lot.
They'd have to come back through for a change in their condition of the plan.
They'd have to change it. We're gonna approve what they have here tonight.
Yeah, yeah, but that's...
In theory, I guess, um, and then with any recommended conditions, um, so assuming it gets passed tonight, let's put it that way. So that's a, that's probably a much bigger discussion, because I know they, they utilize along the property line a lot there too, with some of their pulling in and out and, uh, getting to their mulch piles and stuff like that, so, okay. Uh, any further questions from Mr. Edes? Alright, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out and seeing and hanging with us. At this time, I'll open up the, uh, public comment for the public hearing. Ms. Hurley, you're up first, if you guys want to speak tonight, please. Nothing to contribute, okay. Uh, Jerry Adams?
Good evening. My name's Jerry Lee Adams. I reside at 790 Crown Point Circle in Corolla. I am here representing the Ocean Hill 1 POA. They own the road, the Coral Lane stub, and they're not objecting to the site plan or anything, but what they are concerned with is the road, because the road is very narrow. Two vehicles cannot pass there, and so they are very concerned that they might be held liable for any kind of accident or issues with the road. So they would like to have a hold harmless agreement so that they are not held liable for anything that should happen to the road. And also, should the, the people who want to develop this property want to make changes to that road, widen it or anything, they would want to be part of the discussions leading up to the changes on the road.
Uh, yes, okay. And right now, it's just, uh, just kind of a sandy stub, little thing that's kind of overgrown, right?
Right, right.
The road actually probably is wider than it appears here. It's just a matter of cleaning that thing out.
Well, no, the road actually would, is not wide enough to allow for two vehicles to pass right now.
Right now, yeah, in its current condition, right? So, um, it looks like it, it could be opened up pretty easily to accommodate this.
I guess that depends on the wetland issue.
Right, right. And those little factors that they'll have to deal with.
Right, but they're just concerned that they want to be held harmless should any accidents or issues arise on that road, since they own the road.
And do you know if they've had any discussion with, um, the Hurleys on a hold harmless agreement?
Not that I know of, no.
Okay.
But they're open to any, any kind of discussion.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, I think, uh, probably it's important if we hear from Warren, this is the representative for the Hurleys, to, uh, talk about Coral Lane stub.
Yeah, so the... Thank you for your comments. The issue about Coral Lane stub came up first. I spoke with Ed Cornet. They were at, he was at the public hearing. It was my understanding that, yes, Ocean Hill POA owned that, I guess we'll call it a paper street, but it is used quite a bit.
Yeah, Ponton.
Buddy Ponton uses it for his primary access, access. Um, so, so nobody objects to them using it this way, and we would just be using it, as you can see on, maybe, let's pull the site plan back up?
Yeah, just to come in and that...
Can I do it? I don't know how to do it. I see all those remotes, but I have no idea.
There, oop, there it is.
Um, so we, we recognize that there is a delineated wetland right there at the road. We feel comfortable we can get a 20-foot wide access into the property from that location.
Okay.
Um, my understanding was that, yes, Ocean Hill POA does own the stub, but it has a public right-of-way extended on it, so that that would give us the, the ability to use that as a public right-of-way, so I...
That's crazy. It has been publicly dedicated by virtue of the plaque going to record, and a portion of Coral Lane having been opened and utilized.
Okay, so, and it, and Ike, in that recording, doesn't that absolve, once it's gone public, it would, the neighborhood's not gonna be responsible for cars having crashes on it?
Well, I mean, they, possibly, I mean, they, they own it.
Well, that would, that would be the same with any neighborhood, would it not? That would, you come in a neighborhood that's private land, publicly dedicated?
Well, we kind of went through that with them before when they were trying to prevent Mr., uh, the adjacent property owner from utilizing that to access his property for commercial development. Um, I think the point then was, well, you know, that's what, that's what you can retain insurance for, Ocean Hill.
Alright. Okay.
But then that, can I say something?
Yes, please come on back up.
Then that adds a, an additional burden on the POA to obtain that insurance and pay for that insurance. So, that's, that's their major concern, is that they just, they don't want to be held liable for anything that should happen on that road.
Well, I suspect they have insurance already on, on, on all the roads within Ocean Hill across the street.
So, in a, in a private development, if the road, if a pothole, pothole develops in the road and then general public comes through, and hits that pothole and gets in a wreck and crashes, is that private development, kind of responsible?
I think it'd be much like anyone coming onto your private property as an invitee or a guest, you have an obligation or duty to, to warn them of any type of danger.
They probably have to have some sort of liability insurance anyway for that, because it's their private roads, I mean, for, like, it's a PVA, a public vehicle access.
Okay.
There's a, there's a question, I think, of where the county responsibility for a rezoning in the discussion here ends and, and where you get into a nuanced discussion between...
Parties.
Parties. And I think they're kind of nibbling at the edges of that just a little bit.
The fact that they're already allowing people to use the road, I think that comes into play.
Well, I don't think they have any option, and, and that it's been publicly dedicated.
Okay. Alright, uh, thank you. So, still cloudy. But, uh...
I would add that if this is a, if this is a matter between these two parties, perhaps it's more appropriate for them to address...
To have some discussion, yeah, okay. Alright, and we've got some time, it looks like, before they bring this forward, if they, if they intend to in the future. Okay, thank you very much. Alright, I don't have anybody else signed up this evening. Anybody else want to speak to this? Seeing none, I will close the public comment. Any discussion, further questions, comments from the board? Alright, then I will, uh, make a motion to approve PB 20-02, uh, the Hurley conditional rezoning. The request is consistent with the following policies of the 2006 land use plan, policy ED 1, new and expanding industries and businesses should be especially encouraged, one, to diversify local economy, two, to train and utilize a more highly skilled labor force, and three, are compatible with the environmental quality and natural amenity-based economy of Keratuck County. Policy OB 2, so as to minimize commercial strip development and maximize the traffic, uh, moving capability of NC 12, Keratuck County shall encourage commercial development to cluster in appropriate locations rather than dispersing along NC 12. It is reasonable and in the public interest because it allows new commercial development adjacent to existing commercial development near the Corolla Village commercial area. The proposed uses are compatible with surrounding residential development and landscaping and buffering will be provided. The request utilizes the important economic tourism, community-based image benefits of NC 12 and major highway corridor in Corolla. One of the conditions of approval is to go over the allowable uses of the property. The following types of uses are, will be considered acceptable under this conditional use permit. Animal grooming, or, excuse me, um, this conditional zoning. Animal grooming, animal shelter, vet clinic, fitness center, indoor rec, convenience store, adult daycare center, childcare center, museum, library, retail sales establishment, um, to include art gallery, art center, retail sales of goods and services, nursery production, business and sales, professional services, a restaurant of non-drive-through origin with, uh, indoor and outdoor seating, specialty eating establishment, vocational or trade school, dwelling, single-family detached, or family home care. Prior to land disturbance or construction, the applicant shall submit for site plan approval. Access shall be provided from Coral Lane as presented here tonight. Non-residential design standards and community capability standards of the UDO apply to future development. Uh, the hours of operation shall be consistent with normal retail, um, surf shop type or professional office hours. And, um, uh, the additional recommendation is that the architectural shall be similar to what was, uh, presented here tonight in, in harmony with the Corolla Village architecture. And, um, since we've talked about this hold harmless agreement, I am not gonna make that a condition of the approval, but I'm sure that the parties can talk and come to an agreement. Now, the Hurleys are, want to be good citizens.
One point of clarification in the motion, um, from a, a potential enforcement standpoint, the hours of operation shall be consistent with normal retail surf shop. It would be beneficial to staff if we could actually put time on that.
Okay, uh, how about, uh...
Eight, six.
Six, uh, 6:00 AM to, uh, 10:00 PM? Is that you on it? The board okay with that, Commissioner?
Bob.
Alright, so I would, I would add that the hours be from 6:00 AM to no later than 10:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second his motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, but hours of operation, if you make it an adult, well, no, that's gonna be daycare center, again.
Right. This would be for the general public to come in and out, of course, their staff may come in after that. Um, you have second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries you in. Good luck, sir. We're done. Safe travels.
Thanks, Ralph. You're up at seven for a call.
Alright, next up, once I find my safe word here, that I moved around too much. PB 20-10, the Cotton Gin, the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment for a zone 2.17 acres of ag to GB for property located at 6957 Keratuck Highway in Jarvisburg, Papa Branch Township. Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you all again. This rezoning request is a straight rezoning or general rezoning to, it's not a conditional zoning, um, and it has come out of the fact that the Cotton Gin burned last fall, and now they are attempting to rebuild. Uh, this is the location of, of the Cotton Gin property at six, I can't, my, my eyes have gotten worse as the evening has gone on, uh, at 6957 Keratuck Highway in Jarvisburg. It is currently zoned general business, um, a con, traditional, not a conditional, a traditional zoning district, um, and it is limited service in the 2006 land use plan. What has happened, and the applicants represented can speak more clearly to this, is when they undertook the process of rebuilding and going in with a new site plan, it had come to light that what we had, uh, the county had recorded, the last document we had recorded, did not reflect what they thought this property, how this property was situated. Um, there's also issues with, uh, the placement of the new building that they're wanting, the first building that they're wanting to put on this property, um, because of the, the situation or the configuration of what the county had recorded, there was an issue with the area that they wanted to place the new building not being zoned general business, being zoned ag, and that would severely limit what they were gonna be able to do with that building. So they are requesting, uh, once this, uh, recombination plat is recorded, for a total of 5.45 acres around the Cotton Gin to be rezoned general business. Uh, this is consistent with the frontage, the existing, uh, two, three point, um, 3.25 So they are, would like to have a building that is located here in, in this area of the property. There's also an additional, uh, 100-foot setback from their major arterial for, and limited service and, and rule and conservation. For any general business, there could be 100, an additional 100-foot... For any general business, there could be an additional 100-foot setback because the area, the building that burned, it burned completely. There's only the Time and Tide Cafe, the limited small number, I mean, the small square footage that's left. Any new building would have to come back in compliance with that new 100-foot setback. So for them to utilize their building for Kitty Hawk Kites, for storage of things for the Cotton Gin and other locations, they are going to need to readjust their property lines and have the entire property rezoned to general business. So the 2006 land use plan classifies this as limited service in the Jarvisburg sub-area. And the proposed plan is consistent with the policies of the plan, including policy CD4. Highway-oriented commercial uses should be clustered along segments of the highway and contain land uses which mutually are compatible and reinforcing in use and design. They should be designed in such a way to minimize signage access points to prevent unsightly dysfunctional strip development. Policy ED4, in addition to recruitment and expansion of major new industries, the considerable value of small business startup expansions and spinoffs shall also be recognized. So, planning board and staff, we do recommend approval of this request as submitted. Once again, this is a general business, traditional general business rezoning request. The request is consistent with the 2006 land use plan. Because of the above referenced policies, the request is compatible with the existing and proposed uses surrounding the land subject to the application, and it's an appropriate zoning district and use for the land. It is reasonable and in the public interest because it would result in logical and orderly development pattern and address a demonstrated community need. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about this rezoning request.
Does their, how about their parking lot? I mean, like their uniqueness to their parking lot, how it was, I mean, do those standards still? I mean, is that all, I mean, I know with the setback, it's going to be a little bit different, but is it going to be the same style?
The building and the parking?
Not the building, the parking, I like the parking lot, how it was, I mean, it was just
Yeah. So the parking, the parking doesn't require to be in the 100, is not required to be back 100 feet, is that correct? Just the building itself?
Just the building.
The buildings, yeah.
So if they want to put parking in front of the building?
They can put the parking, some of the parking
They could actually add additional parking in front of the building.
They can put some of the parking in the existing area.
Okay. Where the old footprint was.
Those sides.
Yeah, but if they choose to put parking in the front. Okay. Any more questions from Mrs. Cicero? All right, thank you. I'll invite their representative up to talk to this, they just want to like to speak to this. Oh, we're back to Mr. Ederson. Kill two birds with one stone, see?
So, as Lori described to you, you know, there was a catastrophic, excuse me, catastrophic fire, we're all aware of that. When we started looking at the property corners to try to see what was, what we had for the property and look at the zoning, we realized that what the GIS had, what we had on the ground did not match. And then you look at the, you look at the hatched property area, that's what GIS has. Then the orange is what was on the ground. And then the blue, if you add all together, what's inside the blue and the orange, which is now a nice rectangle, that's what we've actually, we've done the recombination, it's been recorded, and that's what we want to have zoned as GB. Parking is still there, still functional. They lost close to 18,000 square feet of retail space. They're going to probably only put a portion of that back. But with the new 100-foot setback, I mean, we just, we threw that line back. They're fortunate that they have the property to do that. But that just gives them some breathing room so that however we decide to move forward with whatever the site plan ends up looking like, they just needed some more room. They just, we didn't have any space anymore. So this gives them the opportunity to do that. So that's really, that's as far as we've gotten. We've got some ideas on how it will look, but we'll have to go through the site plan process for all that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
How far back from, from the highway does it go by that you had on the ground?
It's almost 300 feet on the north end, and it was considerably less on the south end. And I know that 300 feet used to, it was kind of, that's how we, everything got zoned. But, and you can see the shapes. It was almost as if it got flip-flopped somehow when the deed was entered.
Because I know when we rezoned a lot of property, we put zoning classification on it, it was 500 feet from the central line of the highway.
Yeah, and this one wasn't, and that was, that's a comment that's come up with the family. So that's just, it's 60 more feet behind that east line is all we've added. That's now been, that's recorded in Book R, page 34, I believe. We recorded it last week, so. Yeah, I sent you an email today. We just recorded it last week.
Okay. Anything further from the board for Mr. Ederson? All right, thank you. Have no one signed up to speak for this tonight? Would anyone like to speak to this agenda item? All right, seeing no one coming forward, I will, what's that?
We would like to say something.
You got to come on up to the mic. You remember those days, I think.
Yes, I do. I would like to say that our parents conveyed this piece of property to the Cotton Gin Corporation many years ago when they were still alive. And it was an in-holding in our farm they bought in 1936. And they acquired it sometime in the 50s. It was a small parcel that was originally owned by a gentleman from Shawboro. And he owned that gin and it went to the Newborn family. And finally, my parents bought it in the early 50s. And the Cotton Gin started there in 1972 and was worked on over many years, almost 50 years. In 2022, it would have been there 50 years. And we've had lots of people over the last six months comment about the fire and missing the store and how much effort. But it takes a lot of effort over 50 years to put together that kind of structure. And we'll be working on it. We will own the property outside of this block on the northeast and south end on the highway. And so it will be a property basically that is affected that we still own around it. And so we look forward to having a lot of encouragement by a lot of people to put some kind of facility back there that people can stop at and have over the years. We've had lots of people over the last six months talk about how much they enjoyed the store and the people in it. Luckily, no one was hurt in the fire. That's the most important thing. And it'll take lots of work to get a facility back there that people will want to stop at again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, so I will close the public comment now and open forth for a motion from the board.
I move to approve PB 20-10 because the request is consistent with the policies of the land use plan, some of which are CD4, highway-oriented commercial usage should be clustered along segments of the highways and contain land uses which are mutually compatible and reinforcing in use and design. They should be designed in such a way as to minimize signage access points and to prevent unsightly dysfunctional strip development. ED4, in addition to the recruitment and expansion of major new industries, the considerable value of small business startups, expansions, and spinoffs should also be recognized. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it would result in a logical and orderly development pattern and addresses a demonstrated community need.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries you into the next. Thank you. Next on the agenda, PB 19-20, the Ford Farm, rezoned 224.44 acres from ag planned development residential. The property located in Moyac immediately south of Eagle Creek subdivision and Moyac Middle School. The request includes 280 single-family dwelling lots, up to 100,000 square foot commercial, and 125 upper-story dwelling units and a 22-acre school site. Watch it gets that straight, let's just take a five, stretch the legs. I'm sure we're going to be here for a minute and we'll jump right into that. Thank you. We'll call the meeting back into order and let Mrs. Cicero pick up where she left off after fixing her presentation.
Thank you. A couple adjustments to the agenda made us get out of order with our slides.
Yep.
The request is to rezone 224.44 acres from agricultural to PDR planned development residential. The property is located immediately adjacent to the Foss project that was approved last year and Eagle Creek subdivision and the Moyac Middle School. It is currently zoned AG-ag. And you see the surrounding properties are a combination of single-family residential, planned development residential, sorry, single-family mainland planned development residential ag and with some GB across Survey Road. It is full service in the 2006 land use plan. And in the Moyac small area plan classifications, these two, or these three properties for the whole project area, it is split between full service and limited service for the Moyac small area plan. So they are proposing, well, a planned development residential. We've talked about this a little bit now, a few times, but it has a development with a purpose to encourage the use of innovative and creative design to provide a mix of different residential uses, uses in close proximity to one another on mainland Currituck County, while at the same time providing an efficient use of open space. Limited Foss scale of commercial uses may be allowed in a PDR district primarily to serve the needs of the residents in the development. So a planned development residential, PDR, there's essentially two pieces to this approval, to this project. One is the site plan, the master plan, the conceptual plan, any of those will do, and a terms and conditions document. So before you is the applicant's proposal, which is 285 single-family residential lots with up to 100,000 square feet of commercial, 125 upper-story dwelling units, and a 22-acre school site. So you can see this design, this is their design with the commercial area here, stormwater ponds. The school site would be right here, and the rest would be single-family lots and open space and stormwater ponds. So it does include 67.5 acres of open space for with a density of 1.72 units per acre. So the board has asked us to include this in their staff reports so that you can see how, what the applicant's proposing, how it lines up with their existing zoning and other potential rezoning districts, districts that would be available for rezoning. So the applicant is asking for 410 dwelling units, commercial and school site with open space of 30.1% with a gross density of 1.83 units per acre and a net density which feels like 2.9 units per acre. So with the existing zoning in place, they could have approximately 74 units, 74 dwellings with 50% open space and a gross density of .33 units per acre. Single-family mainland would essentially be one unit per acre with 224, 40% open space. And once again, one unit per acre with a net density of 1.66 units per acre. You can also see if it's for an MXR zoning district or the combination of single-family or multifamily and the density that you'd be getting there. And this does assume 10% area for infrastructure. So the applicant is proposing the internal transportation to have a divided boulevard, an 80-foot minimum right-of-way. The typical, the local road would be a 40-foot minimum right-of-way with four interconnections to Foss and sidewalks along the streets. The external transportation, the main boulevard connection to Survey would be off of Survey Road with the connection on the south side with a driveway across to access the commercial area on the north side of Survey Road and an eight-foot multimodal path along Keritoke Highway. So the residential units, the applicant was asked to complete a traffic impact analysis. They did, and that was approved by NC DOT. And these are the trips per day that this is expected to generate. So for both Foss and Flora, they are expected to generate 8,380 trips per day. And for the existing development in ag, it would forecast it to 708 trips per day. Single-family, 2,144 trips per day.
Lori, you said for Foss and Flora?
Yes.
Is that including with the school?
The traffic impact analysis does not include the school. The applicant, at the planning board meeting, I believe the applicant offered to complete, have a traffic impact analysis completed for the school.
Was the reason for his, that's from DOT, one of the pieces drawn for us?
Well, DOT didn't require for the school. That was a concern that staff had, that we weren't
Why did we combine both subdivisions?
Because they're going to be interconnected.
If memory serves me correctly, that was something that the board talked about at the use permit for Foss, is that the TIA wasn't going to be done for Foss, it would be done for Flora and Foss.
And it culprits Yes.
And where does, that came, that number came out of the traffic impact analysis? Or is that from
That's, that came out of their traffic impact, their phasing memorandum.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I did talk to Deva. He said that this was not a problem.
So is the 83, the 8380, that's combined, correct?
And you said this was from theirs or was it yours?
The 8380 is out of the, their traffic impact analysis.
Was that DOT?
No. VHB completed the traffic impact analysis that was submitted to DOT, and DOT did approve, approve it.
I was reading all this with the analysis, it was like a hundred pages.
It was. And I've got a decent transportation background, but it still was a lot. And then, and Tammy, Tammy Glave, who due to the COVID can't be here to present this, she went over it with a fine-tooth comb.
Somewhere I read where it was a level of service. Can you explain what that is?
We'll have a slide in just a minute, and if I don't answer your questions, Commissioner Etheridge, please ask. So the improvements that they were suggesting happened basically adding turn lanes and stacking for Survey Road at the, let me find, here. And this will be the access for the Flora property here, Flora Boulevard, I think, is the name that they're going. And then for the commercial that's going to the north side. So this is what Commissioner Kitty Etheridge is talking about, that yes, by their own traffic impact analysis. Let me get something that I can see here. There will be the level of service for the signalized intersection with Carrottoke Highway 168 and Survey Road will drop to an E with the 2026 build that's including the improvements. But the biggest drop in service was the unsignaled eastbound lane at 168 and Survey Road. That would also drop for PM peak hours, and this is just for, you know, basically rush hour. That, that intersection would drop to a level of service E. And so we would know, uh, the, these are the, the level of service from definitions from NC DOT. But E, a level of service E describes operation at capacity. Operations at this level are extremely unstable because there are virtually no usable gaps in the traffic stream. Any disruption to the traffic stream such as a vehicle entering the ramp or changing lanes requires following vehicles to give way to admit the vehicle. This can establish a disruption of wave that propagates through upstream traffic flow. At capacity, the traffic stream has no ability to dissipate any disturbance, disruption. Any incident can be expected to produce a serious breakdown with extreme queuing vehicles or spaced approximately six car lengths with little room to maneuver. And so this is a illustration of a level of service E for those two intersections.
Level F was this weekend, I think.
The applicant is proposing a private wastewater treatment plant in the terms and conditions. I think it's going to be approved by NC DEQ. They will have county water and they have modify or adhere to all the TRC recommendations for looping the water system through Foss and Flora. The drainage, the streets will mostly be curb and gutter with the typical lot line swells and a series of BMPs, stormwater ponds. There are delineated wetlands on this project, the ma, with a major drainage feature traversing the site. There's high groundwater tables, low elevation, poor draining soils. So the Foss drainage commitments, for the Foss project can, one of the commitments was to clear and snag and I think layback on a three-to-one slope, Roland Creek. They are proposing to continue those Roland Creek improvements to the Eagle Creek pump station. Also improving the ditch or installing a new ditch along portions of the property line between the project and Eagle Creek and ranch land. Another, schools, let's just go to it. So as of September 2019, the Board of Education had adoption, adopting the new capacity numbers. And let me get to something I can see, cause I'm used to, I'm used to sitting down there and seeing things a little bit more. Based on those numbers for 2019, 2020, 2020, 2021, Moyac Elementary School is over capacity 109%. Shawboro Elementary is at 87%. This project is projected to generate 71 students for the Moyac Elementary School District and 31 for the Shawboro School District. So in 2021, 22, there's going to be class size changes for K through three. Essentially, and I believe the superintendent here is can speak to a little bit better than I can on this, but essentially they're gonna reduce the class sizes for K through three, which is going to impact school capacity. And for that, for 2021, 2022, they're at actual 15, 115% of Moyac Elementary School and 90% at Shawboro Elementary School. As it currently stands, as it currently stands without that. So on June 11th, last week, I think, at this point, I'm not sure, my weeks are running together. I did get an email from the former superintendent that proposed these new capacities for Moyac Elementary School that did include the four new classrooms, the two mobile units. So Moyac Elementary School at 560 is their current capacity, but with the mobile units, they have gone up to 640. With the state changes to class size for 21, 22 school year, they, the current, the capacity without the mobile units was 529, with the mobile units at 609. So, you know, these are the capacities that, that, that the superintendent gave us that showed, and he came to the planning board meeting and did say that these were the, the capacity, this is the capacity, what'd he say, temporary capacity? Temporary adequate public facilities. So. Four.
Two buildings, four classrooms.
Four classrooms. So, and I believe, we spoke brief, we touched briefly on this during, you know, during the budget discussion about, this Board of Education has not taken official action on this and it is scheduled to be on their agenda for Thursday's meeting. So.
I have a question for, I know you were at the Moyac Elementary School Town Hall.
I was there.
You were there. Who else?
Owen was there.
And Owen. When the topic of portable classrooms came up, I thought there was, I recall a debate or a discussion where that was not the fix, it was not a fix or was not a, I, I'm curious, I mean, I get it, we get more storage space for kids with adding mobile home or, oh lord.
Mobile units.
They're cute colors and they're on foundations, right? So I guess my question is, what, is the methodology changing? What's?
Well, so I think, I think it'll be appropriate to bring them up in just a minute. We'll get to that and dig into this.
She's the one that put that.
I know, I'm, I'm, I'm up here taking slings and arrows.
We'll get, we'll invite them up to explain their thought process.
So in general, staff just has some major concerns about this project. The wastewater treatment plant, the terms and conditions says that it would be a DEQ, DEQ, with approval would be required by this. Is that, is, is that what it is gonna be in Foss, that change from DEQ to human, health and human services? That may be something that you want to ask that, the T, the traffic impact analysis does not include Moyac Farms as a background development. Since Moyac Farms has come forward and they're gonna be amending their use permit to address access. Not access from the highway over the railroad, but they're gonna be accessing through Foss. If Foss was included as a background development for Flora, would the, the entrance in and out of Moyac Farms, just a concern.
What does Moyac Farms have to do with the rezoning? I mean, that, that's something totally different.
It's totally different. I mean, it's just a concern.
And we wanted them to have interconnectivity.
Right.
And we want interconnectivity.
We do, but.
Oh, they're suggesting, oh, they got a railroad track probably.
Would that be part of a zoning, I mean, a special use permit?
Again, I had a lengthy contact, conversation with David Ott. And he said Moyac, was it Moyac Farms?
Moyac Farms.
Like 30 lots.
Their impact on this project is insignificant.
Insignificant.
Not even worth going there.
Right.
And as to the other concern that staff vocalized, we already had this discussion as a board and, and this goes back to the Foss Act. And we said, as long as it's the right health agency, what four letters stand for that is not ours to determine.
Okay.
That, and in fact, I followed that up with a conversation with Ralph Hollowell, who's Alvin Morrow Health, and that's, this is his baby. And his comment is, they all operate off of the same guidelines. It's synonymous, it doesn't matter. So we as a county staff should not have problems with those four letters anymore.
Well, I mean, I would recommend that when the applicant needs to just put state approved.
State approval.
That's fine, but it's not a concern. It shouldn't be a concern.
Right.
Okay.
Which, still.
So we do have a concern that the school was not included, was not required. DOT did not require that the school be included in the traffic impact analysis. That's just a staff concern. We're also concerned about the level of service dropping from the worst from a C to an E at those intersections of Carrottoke Highway.
What's the, what's the, just curiosity, like far as the traffic, far as it's a C to an E, well, like Moyac Elementary School, like in the morning times, when their parents, I don't even know why we have buses for Moyac Elementary School, cause every parent takes their kid to school, I'm working at the cheer for, what's, do you know, I mean, just curiosity, what's, like that is like crazy busy. We always have a deputy.
That wasn't part of the study, so the traffic engineer, the company that did it would have to be.
Do we know of another E in the county?
I'm sure there are other Es in the county, I mean.
Harpenter on Saturday.
That's not, that doesn't.
I mean, really in ser, truly probably, you know, Es are, are, you're gonna see them on Highway 12 in our county. Whenever, I mean, during peak season, on rainy days. I mean, that's. The data traffic impact analysis are studied on any of these specifics.
Right, and I'm just trying to, it'd be nice to know well if the, if the McDonald's intersection there, you know, in Granny, that's an E. It's something that we, okay, well, that's not.
Well, I mean, and I, I'd go back to the pictures, I mean, that's strictly DOT mainly. So if you go back to the pictures of levels of service, I mean, that is the DOT, so think about roads. You know, a two-lane, you know, highway, that's what an E looks like.
So, and what was that again, I'm sorry, we're currently at a what?
A C.
A C, okay, and it takes us down to a D or an E.
Those two intersections.
At full buildout.
At full buildout with road improvements.
Before a school.
Before a school.
Before a school.
And the F is Wendy's.
I can guarantee you that Survey Road stoplights not a C, it's a, it's an E today, moving during the weekdays.
Schools, this is the, the current boundary between the Moyac and the Shawboro. And you see unfortunately, this property is split by that. We're concerned that the Board of Education needs to take official action to increase this capacity with the mobile units. Because they did take official action for the, in September 2019 to, to, to modify those capacities. I would feel better as county staff to have that.
But with the current boundaries in play, it splits the development right now.
It splits the development. 71 students generated would go to the Moyac Elementary School and 31 would go to Shawboro.
This raises an interesting question, do we use capacity numbers at rezonings or at special use programs?
We would, those are the.
I, I think it's something to consider both, you are required to use them at the.
If you use permit here, yeah, because of the.
It's just for understanding purposes.
It's for understanding, but theoretically, when is the first house, under best case scenario, when would the first house be built?
I think we'll hear from them on that.
Well, I think the applicant's proposing, you go into, lots go into record, or I'm sorry, the preliminary. The final plat of July or August of this year.
August of 2021.
Stayed a year out.
Phase one.
And how many units is that?
No, it's 58 units in August of 21.
I think the proposal, those would be at Shawboro. I mean, they can speak to that a lot better.
So, so this is the schedule that they're, the phasing schedule that they're proposing with the final plats.
One other question, in school, talking about school capacity. How many committed seats have we got that's been out there for 10 or 12 years on record?
A fair amount, I would say. I, I don't know, I don't have that number, um, right here off the top of my head. But that's why, we track committed capacity so that you all will know as the lots are, as lots are approved and then they come online with a house, you will know that, I mean, it moves from committed capacity to actual capacity if there's a student there. So that is just for tracking purposes and planning purposes, so, so you all will know where we stand with the build-out potential and what schools we need to start thinking about, um, planning for building, reconfiguring, and you know, that.
Okay.
So, um, we are concerned that approving a phasing schedule based on a conceptual timeframe from elementary school, the elementary school was based on, the phasing plan has an elementary school opening in 2023. Worried that that could be an unmanageable situation. The Moyac Middle School and High School populations are near or will be over capacity in next three to five years. As the county manager was talking about, the, the children matriculating from the elementary schools into the middle schools. You know, we're, we're near capacity there. So with the, with the class size changes in 21, 22 school year in K through three, the Moyac Elementary School capacity with mobile classrooms is 609. The January 2020 ADM for Moyac Elementary School is 609.
So they're already there?
So.
Average daily membership?
Average daily membership, sorry, average daily membership.
So what, what Lori's saying is that when the new legislation goes into effect in school year 21, 22, even with the 80 additional seats from the mobile classrooms, Moyac Elementary School will be at 609 available seats. As of January of this year, we had 609 students at Moyac Elementary School.
It was 560 something the last day, right in March last.
Those are numbers that came straight, those are numbers that came from the school system.
Okay.
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 It was, it was, I mean.
We'll talk about their, their numbers, okay?
So, um, and we have a concerns about the commercial area. It's proposed up to 100,000 square feet of commercial with up to 125 upper-story dwellings. The soils in this area, Rowan Oak and Cape Fear are, when we pull open the Currituck County Soil Survey, says they're poorly situated to most urban and recreation uses because of flooding, wetness, slow permeability and low string. PDRs are supposed to be limited small-scale commercial uses, have those, primarily serve the needs of the residents of the development. Is 100,000 square feet, is that small-scale limited commercial uses? That's, that's up for the board to decide. To me, 100,000 square feet, between the 100, between this and Foss, we're gonna have up to 122,000 square feet of commercial. The Moyac Small Area Plan, Future Land Use Map, does have designated activity centers for retail mixed use, a mix of retail, restaurants, offices and medical. And it's located over 5,000 feet to the north of the Flora site. It's just the RU, it's the RMU on this map and there is a dotted red line that comes down right here. This is where the Moyac Small Area Plan designated for retail mixed use. We're having this, this area right here, we're gonna have a 100,000 square feet of, of commercial in that area. I am concerned that we were gonna be pushing up to 100,000 square feet of commercial out of this area and pushing it further down Carrottoke Highway. So in this up to 100, 100,000 square feet of commercial. So in this up to a hundred and tw- a hundred and thousand square feet of commercial and up to a hundred and twenty-five upper story dwelling units, there's no time denoted on the phasing plan for this. It's understandable that, um, you need to get a market for that. But at the planning board meeting, the applicant's consultant stated that the commercial development would not happen before 2025. And it would occur in, at least for the first two, in basically ten thousand square foot increments. Um, and that's noted in the phasing plan, but it would also be significantly less than a hundred thousand square feet of commercial. So, um.
So the up to may never happen?
That would be a question for the applicant. I am concerned that up to a hundred thousand square feet and the up to a hundred and twenty-five upper story dwelling units could not happen for a while, for a long time. So. Um, and we just do have concerns and, you know, and as Jenny stated in two thousand nineteen and October of last year, you all had a visioning session and you were worried about, concerned about managing the growth in Moyack. Um, once again, this is a legislative decision and you should take into account all, all the, all these and probably more factors that you're concerned with. Um, if you do invest this with the zoning determiner, the zoning designation of a PDR, then you are gonna be faced with a, um, preliminary plat use permit where you may have to make a finding about adequate public facilities. So although you may not need to give it the same weight and scrutiny as you would at the use permit stage, making the legislative decision, you have a little bit more flexibility in your, in how you, in what you use to make your decision. And also in February of 2020, you directed staff to remove the PDR option for UDO, concerned, good, straight up concern over density. So those are some of our concerns. We're concerned about the phasing schedule as the, as the school is included, uh, is opening in 2023. Um, I'm concerned over having legal documents that wastewater treatment will be allowed, will be, that the school will have access to the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and there was some concern from the school facilities maintenance transportation director over street widths for the school buses. So, uh, the technical review committee recommends denial of this request based on, um, the traffic impact analysis. Um, it does not include the school site. It, the level of service drops from, drops at two E at Carritoc Highway and Survey Road with the intersection at peak times without inclusion of a new school traffic. The school capacity may be available today according to the email from the former superintendent, but then it's not available, uh, for, in the school year twenty-one, twenty-two with the new class sizes. Um, and since the school site is part of the PDR, um, the developer must address how school will open if finished before the wastewater treatment plant's on there. In the terms and conditions document, the, um, the applicant is, um, offering a workforce housing condition. The county cannot regulate or enforce a workforce housing. Uh, I think they're saying up to ten percent of the dwellings, a hundred and twenty-five above story dwellings, upper story dwellings would be considered for workforce housing, um, and, but we cannot regulate or enforce that. There is concern over the street width for the school bus. So in that, the TRC and staff is recommending denial. Um, planning board did recommend approval of this, um, specifically because of the school site. But staff's opinion is that this plan development rezoning request is inconsistent with the below, with the applicant applicable standards from the, from the UDO. It's not consistent with the goals and objectives of the policies of the land use plan or other applicable county adopted plans of the UDO. So it's land use policy, and these are, are all listed in your staff report, H and one, TR two, SF three, SF four, AG six and PP two. It is also inconsistent with the Moyack Small Area Policies of TR one, FLU one, and the Future Land Use Map with the Activity Center location. So one of the purposes of the UDO is facilitate adequate provision of transportation, utilities, parks, recreation, emergency service and other public facilities. This proposal is insufficient in determining the safety of the transportation service and offer dwelling units in a school where the Board of Education has unofficially approved a new capacity. It is not reasonable and not in public interest because of the inconsistencies with the land use plan, Moyack Small Area Plan and purpose of the UDO. There are uncertainties about the new school's capacity, development to serve it now and in the next, in two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two. So, um, these are the inconsistency policies. Um, however, uh, the applicant has put, placed in your past, has to be placed in your packet, a list of consistent policies. And there are a fair amount of consistent policies in the land use plan, uh, and they are listed there. So.
So the planning board, you said they voted three, two in favor of it?
They voted three, two in favor of it?
Two, what, was, was it just the school that they voted in favor of or was there another reason why they thought it was good for?
They.
I guess what I'm asking is if they, if the planning board voted three to two in favor. I mean, did they give reasoning why the judgment, did they, did they provide staff, anybody with the positive? Or was it just right there, I'm not, just the school?
It was the planning board chairman, when he, but in the time of discussion, he said it was be- because they are offering the school site. And that was the reason that he was getting, um, he did have, you know, we provide, um, sample motions to them, just like you. We did provide, um, the applicant's consistent statements, so that was what they were. They used those, there, I mean, there are plenty of consistent statements, um, for that. Staff has just major concerns about all the other issues.
Seth, are you at the stopping point for your?
Yes, I'm at the stopping point. Yes.
Okay. Somebody wake Paul up so we can continue.
It's on on so many.
All right. Any questions, we, does everybody get with questions from Mr. Sisneri before she jumps out of there? Okay, um, while we were hot and heavy on the school side of it, I'll let them come up. Get those questions out of the way and then we'll let the applicant's representative come in and have a chat. So for the record, we'll need your names for this, uh, hearing as well. And Mr. Beaumont can dig into his questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Who, whom would you prefer to address your questions, I guess?
Matt Lutz, interim superintendent for Carritoc County Schools.
Matt Mullins, facilities maintenance and transportation for Carritoc County Schools.
Karen Etheridge, chairman of the Board of Education.
And you got them all staring at me now?
Oh, yeah, you're in the spotlight, but we know you like the spotlight. We're like Larry. So you did raise a couple of questions, um, and, you know, Laurie brought up, uh, the fact that you guys are, your ADM right now is.
Six oh nine.
Six hundred and nine.
Six oh nine, which is pretty much tapped out with the addition of the mobile units, is that correct? And not right this moment, but will be in two years or a year.
Yeah, the, the mobile units are a temporary fix.
Right.
For the, for the problem at hand. And Dr. Lutz, if you'd like to.
Yeah, so the, the mobile unit issue is to, to deal with, so we've got a couple of factors going on here. One of the factors is the state is requiring us to reduce class size. And that's, that's why those numbers, I'm like you, when I look at it and I see the number going down at, two consecutive years, that doesn't seem to make good sense. And so, but the requirement, we just had to hire, probably gonna hire five new teachers to handle the class size issue. Two specifically for Moyack, and we had to hire two last year as well. We might've had to hire a third, we had to hire one at George because the state is requiring us to meet these, these numbers. And they get worse in another year. They don't get better, they become even tighter. Um, I can share that, that language with you.
Well, I think we're aware of that. We've, we've, we've been grappling that for the last couple of years, both, both boards, you know.
But that's part of that goofy number.
So I, I think it, I think, uh, Commissioner Beaumont's, one of his points that the problem for us is we're looking at that. We know we don't have a school coming in two years. You guys are already there now, two years from now, you know, you got another problem. And, and one of the concerns that's been raised, okay, you got enough room to put kids in these classrooms. What happens with the, that extra capacity on the school site itself? Whether it's lunchrooms, uh, playground, you know, th- those types of things, those other interactions that take place beyond instruction.
Part of the challenge has been, and we've, we've been in presentations where school capacity, adequate school facilities has been briefed to us in the past. And, you know, engineers go a hundred by a hundred, that's, you know, fifty-seven students. And, and I'm good with that. You know, we counted classrooms that were computer labs, you know, we can put fifty-seven kids in there or whatever that number is. So, you know, it's simple for me, but what Mr. Stefanic used to do is come in and go, well, you know, yeah, we've got a computer lab, but it's gotta be a computer lab, therefore you can't count that as, and I get all that. And, and, and we churned and churned and churned, and at the end of the day, we came up with, you all educate, we legislate.
Nice. You're good, you're good this late in the evening.
And so, and then, and so the challenge was, it seems like up until this development, there was one methodology being used. And then we have a letter of opinion by the school board that says, oh, we, we're all good with this now. And with, you know, with things that have nothing to do with this development per se, from our Board of Commissioners perspective or the planning board, right? Cause we don't approve neighborhoods based on swimming pools, for example. And I. And the residents of Carritoc County don't want us to approve a subdivision just cause they're gonna get a swimming pool. But when you start delving in that, it's, it's the dilution of roles or the, you know, okay, you guys educate, we legislate. And he signed for y'all.
Because we had a discussion and, and let me go back, cause y'all were, some of you were there at the Moyack School.
Yeah, we were in there.
We were there.
The high seats. Yeah, you were down there.
But let me go back a, a little bit for the public and for those that weren't there that day. Um, at that time, we knew we were over or close to capacity. And the numbers have fluctuated and, and we have, you know, the twenty, twenty-one numbers, if you'd like to look at those, we have that information too. But here's what we were asked to do. I'll just, I'll just let you know, we've, we've honored the commissioner's request to identify a suitable piece of land to build a new elementary school on. As you know, any large tract of land most likely is currently zoned ag. Any, any parcel that we, we have seen that may be our top three, we had a second choice. That property was in the same situation as the property tonight. It had a contingency, it had a due diligence period, a contingency for rezoning. So we went to each site, approximately eight different sites. We had some sites that the county recommended, and so we looked at those. This was our top choice. And we're not trying to hide anything. I negotiate contracts on a daily basis. And in negotiations, you talk about price, you talk about concessions, you talk about what's in it for me. And when I say what's in it for me, what's in it for the kids of Carritoc County? So when you look at location of this parcel already having a school right next door. And when I talked to, um, a lot of people that were involved, public safety comes to mind for our students. And it includes walking trails to the schools. Safety is, is a big concern. The other sites didn't have that. Another site had a, an open pit on, in the back of the property. That, that's a concern for me. Uh, my family, we've had an open, uh, sand pit for many, many years. And I can't imagine building a school close to an open sand pit. And when negotiating sales, of course, we look at things such as price concessions. And during our due diligence, one of the big things for me is our soil sample study, which we hired a firm, you're probably familiar with Get Solutions. And our top two choices, uh, for the new school site, they went out and they did their studies. And they came back and told us this site was the best site out of the two. And I have that document if anyone would like to see it. I'd be glad to share that with you.
But that, that, that same soil is to the whole development?
Yes. That's right. The whole development. It's, it's, and it's the same as the elevations, you know, next door at the school that's currently there. Good, yes, yes.
We narrowed it down to two sites from like, like Ms. Etheridge said, seven or eight. And I didn't get involved in it until it was down to those two sites. And I was told to go out and get a soil analysis. Soil analysis came back and she said that this site was the better to build on, the, gonna be the most cost effective to build on and give us less trouble in the future. Then, once we selected the architect that we had planned on using until we had a change, they hired, they had an engineer that gave us advice on that, that same thing. And this site came back far and above the best site to build on out of the two that we had choices of. Positive backing on this one site.
My questions aren't necessarily why you picked the site. Because again, that's, that's what you guys do.
Yeah.
My question is, goes back to the philosophical approach to, I'll use portables, cause.
That's it.
A portable classroom environment, whereas I've been in briefs where Mark, wrong, different Mark, brief, that wasn't a solution. And so now at the end, on his way out the door, it's, it's now good and the school board is all behind it. And so the engineer in me then stands up and goes, okay, what changed? And, you know, I, again, taking everything out, and it has nothing to do with the school site. It has to do with what philosophically changed that all of a sudden now were adequate. And, and, and again, and, and looking at where that school line goes. You've gotta figure out how buses are gonna go.
I know, I don't like, I don't like the way that line looks myself.
No.
I think what changed is necessary. We're at a point now where we know that we have a temporary fix coming this summer. And we thought that we were, based on estimates of county manager and board, three years out until COVID hit. When we were given the three years out before COVID hit, we were given adequate information from our county attorneys and architects that we spoke to, three years is nothing. If y'all can afford it, we can get it done in two. So we thought two years to three, mobile classrooms, adequate facilities temporarily, school built, we're in there. Those are sitting there as extra capacity, temporary capacity to possibly be moved to Moyack Middle School or wherever we need them. Things have changed because of funding, so.
Because depending, and I'll tell you, the eleven million we were gonna get.
So the, the whole problem I have with the, the mobile classrooms is yes, it gives you seats, but a- as Chairman White pointed out, you're already having trouble at Moyack Elementary, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're having trouble at Moyack Elementary of getting lunch in now. And if you add, am I right? I mean, you're starting lunch at like ten AM and finishing it around two o'clock.
It's a little bit late. It's Shawboro and Moyack have about the same, the same.
It's a significant amount of time.
I get, I think probably ten forty.
But if you add four more classrooms, isn't that gonna burden the, the facilities even more? I mean.
So it's the same.
I mean, it, to me. I mean, it, to me, four more classrooms and how you fit that in and, and meet that at an adequate facility is troubling.
I think the, the mobile classrooms are gonna happen either way, right? This burden was gonna be placed on the. The question is, you know, it wasn't considered adequate.
And all of a sudden now it is.
And now it is. That's, that's, that's the part that you're handling, right?
I can understand.
And we understand that there was an end in sight at some point, but now.
We had a long, we had that discussion because, and I, and I, the best, where we were kinda at was we were treating the mobile. I don't think that there, I'm gonna speak pretty frankly here. There was six, and you, you kinda grinned when I said, there were so many discussions at the board level around these capacities. I don't think there was a full understanding of what the impact was in moving a capacity number. And what that capacity number actually entailed for what the decisions you have to make. That, that is the answer that I'm.
Like we did earlier.
One, one thing I do wanna make clear, I was, I think, very clear in communicating the impacts of those decisions to at least the former superintendent.
Yes.
And I mean, I think that we've sat in meetings and had very clear conversations. So, and I understand that things have changed, but I don't.
Oh, no, we were brutal because she takes those numbers and then has to run with them and come up with a plan. And it wasn't until we woke up and went, oh, my gosh, we're overcrowded, that it became, it went to extremes. Now, if I understood correctly, even with the mobile classrooms, the portables, we're already maxed.
How many kids on March, and I go into schools more than anybody in this room, in March, there was five hundred and sixty?
Well, the five sixty is the, the number that was set, uh, board is there.
Well, what was the number? What was, it was five fifty or five sixty in March? I mean.
Well, I mean, the, the January ADM that we gave came directly from the school system.
Yeah, and next year, next year will be.
They never had that many kids.
Next year will be less.
Right.
I'll, I'll put my house on it. I asked, I asked the principal, was five fifty or five sixty something?
That was what it ran for the last couple of years.
That's what it was like in March. I mean, I know, and then we had, it was five sixty.
Karen, are you saying that the ADM is going to go down next year at Moyac?
That's the projection.
No, not the ADM. This is a, the, the capacity, not the ADM.
From five sixty to five twenty-nine.
Without the eighty.
Without the eighty. With the eighty, the point is, we were at six oh nine. Next year, we're back to six oh nine, adding two mobile classrooms.
And we have, according to the school system, in January, we had six hundred and nine kids in Moyac Elementary.
So my point, where I'm driving to is even with the two mobile classrooms, we've not gone anywhere up.
No, but I think the bottom line is, we're looking at probably three schools in the next five to ten years. Doesn't matter what we do as far as moving mobile classrooms in. The bottom line is, we need to find the property, we need to look to the future. We can't look back and say so-and-so shouldn't have said this, we shouldn't have done that. Let's move forward, come up with a plan and go with it. Because I think time is of the essence with making some of these decisions and moving forward. Because it's not gonna, it's not gonna get any better. And I don't wanna see a lot of mobile units throughout the county and a lot of our schools. And with the funding, if we don't receive the eleven million from the state, you know, with the bond referendum, that may be what we have to do. And if we do, so be it. We don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of.
I don't think we're looking back at all. What, what we're trying to, to, and, and I think, I'll speak, speak for me. I think we got it now. I think there is an awareness of the team right now with the Board of Education and Dr. Lutz that we now understand a lot better that all of this, we all gotta play together and we all gotta, you know, be brutally honest and, and coordinated. I think that you're addressing the potential for three classrooms, it, or three schools. That's what that guy over there's been, you know, this is a bigger thing than just Moyac Elementary. Because cost-wise, we can't absorb the cost of three, three schools. With what we're doing right now. So going back, you know, one of the aspects of my other professional life is managing risk, right? Looking at this going, okay, what happens if school's not ready in time? Or what happens if, and the fact that where we're at, where we're at, again, it does, I don't care where the property is. I don't care where the, you know, I don't care. We have a funding problem that we gotta figure out. And that's gonna take at least two years to get one of the options run to ground. And that's, that's the, uh, the bond referendum.
And I'm looking at it as, um, as a Realtor, put my Realtor hat on for a minute and say, okay, from the, from the Virginia line south in that Moyac district, is there another site that has the twenty-two to thirty acres that would be suitable? Location, location, location. There is not. So with that being said, do we move forward? Or do we say, okay, scratch everything that we've done, start over? But I can tell you, I have not found another piece of property with the amenities that this one would provide our kids. So that's, that's my.
What do you mean by the amenities of the little?
We mean by like the location, the fact that they could walk. We can cut down our transportation costs. Two, and they're within close enough where we can have a large number of walkers, which is something we can't do here very often as well.
And I don't know, do elementary's kids, school kids walk to school?
There's some. Their parents walk with them. Yeah, they walk with them a lot. Or bigger brothers at the middle school ride with them.
Oh, sure. Yeah, because you have saving, you, you think about all the things that you have to do in a development. And with this site, with contacting our board attorney and with him talking to the developer's attorney, here are just a few things, stormwater design and engineering cost. They would be paid by the developer. The developer is further along with the approval process, even though he has to have rezoning. Location is centrally located, relieve both Shawboro and Moyac Elementary schools. They would share some of the common infrastructure. That's a, that's huge. When you, you know yourself, when you go to maybe an event at Moy, um, Curtuck Middle, Curtuck High School, we share the.
Parking lots.
Parking lots. And that's such a big plus because if we have a big football game or a play, you, you're within walking distance to either, either school. Soil conditions, that's, that's been proven. We, some of the board members, we disagreed on that, but none of us are soil experts. You know, and we talk about perking, but that really doesn't come into play. But this document that we have from Get Solutions confirmed that this was the better site with the soil conditions. Safe access to the highway. You have safe access, you have the walking trails, which was a big concern. I didn't want it, you know, a lot of kids on the roads. But if you have, um, walking pathways that would protect our kids if they were on bicycles or like my granddaughter, she's on these rolling tennis shoes that have wheels under them.
Owen's got a pair.
Huh?
Owen's got a pair.
I actually do.
Anyway, and then one of the biggest things for me is cost. If, if, I talked to Ms. Etheridge about this, if someone's willing to work with this and possibly donate it, if that can be done, you'd have to check with the accountants or pay whatever we would need to do. Fair market value, whatever we could negotiate on that. There's not anything we've been trying to hide. There's, there's some rumor out there that, oh, you're in cahoots with the developer, you're, you're doing things behind the scenes. I am not. Ask me anything you want to ask me because I don't have any skin in the game other than the, the kids of this county. This is a public service position. I'm not here at eleven o'clock for.
Glad I can't survive.
For fifteen thousand dollars a year, I can tell you that. So if you, if you think I am, yeah. I just, I wanted to do the right thing. So please, if, if you hear somebody saying Karen's in cahoots with somebody, she's a Realtor and this guy's a developer, that's not the case, but I'm off track. So go ahead and, and ask us any more questions.
How many kids walk to, walk to probably Eagle Creek to the school there?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Probably about forty to fifty bikes and walk. There's a bunch, believe it or not.
Kevin, you would know more.
Forty or fifty. I mean, because we patrol that school in the morning, probably forty to fifty.
Yeah, there's a bridge, there's a bridge and a gate through the back of the property.
Yeah, and they let them go there.
Right.
There's a couple of bike racks.
Somebody threw a couple pallets. Yeah, somebody threw a couple pallets on that one lady's yard and she let the kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple pallets where somebody put, and they cut through there.
Yeah.
You were talking about cost saving. What was the first thing you said that was cost saving?
With soil, soil drainage solutions.
Yeah, stormwater, design and engineering cost.
They would, I mean, but, but not for the school. But I would, what I would say is, and I can jump in here. I don't think that that can influence your decision one way or another. If you get into some really iffy ground, when you start saying, well, we'll consider you paying for this study for the.
Yeah, we, yeah, we talked about that, Ben, and it, that's, it's, it's tricky because if you can't discuss those things.
That's a school thing. We're not, we're not gonna use that away on our decision tonight. You guys work on a deal with the. You don't, you don't want to give the appearance that, that you're running into contract zone.
Yeah, yeah.
Going back, right? Going back. And that goes back to capacity. Even with the mobile classrooms, we're maxed with what we have right now. And kick the school down the road another year, we're not just a capacity, we're in a crisis, in my opinion. Whether they can walk to school, bike to school, fly to school, I don't care. And that's my driving concern is coming out of COVID, we can all hope for the best, expect the best. But it's a strange new world that we live in right now. And I don't think we can plan on anything but slower, right? I mean, I just.
Less density.
And, I mean, it could go either way because you've got everybody else that's train wrecked in construction that.
Right.
You know, all of a sudden now they become available.
Classroom capacity could change.
Right.
State right now because they say, oh, well, you can only educate thirty kids instead of sixty kids.
Any consideration on redistricting? Moving students out of Shawboro here to Central and then some from Moyac.
I've thought about that.
Hold on, give the people with the brooms and the pitchforks.
Yeah, that's exactly what you. Yeah. Yeah, I think you would have an outcry from the public. Because when people buy homes, I think one of the number one questions that I'm asked as a Realtor, what school district is my child gonna, not district, but what school is my child going to attend? I think if we make that decision to redistrict, we're gonna have an outcry from the public.
You can't.
But you know what? If they were really serious, they'd move to Knott's Island.
And I'm not prescribing, but as a part of it, just temporary until we can get to school.
Right, but your kid will be a middle school by then.
And I would like to think that when, when we start to plan and have those meets and we start moving, when we, we get things lined up, th- those decisions can be made more thoughtfully than just a random act. And just, okay, we're up against it. That's not some, that's, that is a difficult conversation for the Board of Education. That, and you've been through it before. Those are not good times. Those are, those are rough.
Well, I just ask is the possibility there.
It's the, it's words that we don't speak in public. It came from you, so.
Yeah, I saw the deer in the headlights last year.
I think one challenge that, that the Board of Education is gonna face is that Central, I mean Shawboro in two years is at capacity. See, I mean, you can't move kids, but, but so much. And then all three of the schools north of the Coin Jock Canal, the elementary schools are gonna be at capacity. I mean, that's, if development continues at a rate that we're seeing, that's where we're headed. So that's why I say that you are looking at multiple elementary schools.
It was rapid with Moyac last year. It was, Moyac sat at five fifty, everybody kept saying, and boom, we had sixty kids. And it, and they spread out evenly. That doesn't, but that actually was nice. But every class was running about a hundred to a hundred and ten in that building. And we got a little bit of a buffer here for the next year. Our fifth grade class, I don't know what occurred, but that class is really small. Going, there's only sixty-three kids going to sixth grade from Shawboro. So there's like, we got a little gift in there to buy a little bit of time as things move through. But we're not seeing, for middle school, but we're not seeing that, that, we're seeing a consistency at Moyac that, that definitely we should.
So here's the other question. And, and I don't, I'm not sure any of us are smart enough to figure this one out. You know, tracking what Virginia's doing, tracking what our department, our DPI has come out and saying, you know, I guess our state superintendent of education. And again, this is post-COVID. With, you know, two days a week and one day being out, you know, depending on what that education quote-unquote model looks like, that makes me even more nervous or more concerned about anything else. Because, you know, now, I mean, it's almost like we could build bigger classrooms and get more kids, but still be. It's, we're about to train wreck education in the state, well, nationally.
There, there's some grave concerns regarding, uh, what's going on and the different limitations. We convened a, a task force for reopening schools last week. And it's, it's daunting in terms of what we're expected to do in the restrictions. But that is changing almost daily in terms of what the outputs from Raleigh are and what, what we're gonna be expected to do. So I, the latest was the entire state will be said that we'll be on the same, we can be more restrictive, but here's the minimum and they're gonna come out. That was a, a webinar this afternoon, but that is a moving target. We're waiting to hear what the governor has to say.
Remember, Curtuck County sixteen and up. We've only had sixteen cases, none active.
And there was talk of a heat and saying that there's fluctuations from county to county, which then that would favor us to do.
Each LEA would have its own choices to make. Each, each school district.
School district, yep.
Would have its own, um, you, you do your thing, Eric, I do my thing, Kevin, I do my thing, depending on the heat.
Decide. Yeah. All right.
You're welcome to turn up here.
Beat the horse. Beat them, beat you guys up enough at this point. I think we're here late enough. It's time to bring African out. We've, uh, been very patient with us. Thank you again for coming up and talking to us and explaining your numbers. Come on up, Mark. We've missed you. It's been months.
Keep in mind, we've been here a long time.
Yes, speak rapidly.
Well, you've, you've seen a lot of it before, so I'll.
Good, you throw up the same slides.
Probably some people who haven't seen it, so I'll go through it, but I'll try to go through it, uh, quickly. Also, there are, there are, there are a couple of slides that are difficult to see in this venue. So we've made some printed copies of that along with some other information.
May that for you, Paul.
Just for you, Paul.
Thank you so much.
And, uh. Good lord. Can we, you guys wanna recess till tomorrow at six?
What?
No, I'm at the long hall. I'm here.
Kevin's gotta go to bed and.
I don't care. I'll just get right in the car and do worse.
All right. It's my favorite. Powerpoint.
All right, thank you. All right, Mark. So just quickly, this is an overview of our presentation. We're gonna talk a little bit about the master plan. We're gonna talk about the, uh, school attendance districts. We'll talk a little bit about the phasing plan. Just provide a little bit more detail of that. Talk about student generation. And, uh, you know, when are these students actually expected to enter the schools? We'll go through the zoning commitments that we're offering. And we'll talk about compatibility and consistency. We're gonna talk about, some more about traffic. And, uh, and then we'll kinda summarize. So as Ms. LaCicero showed you, this is the, uh, this is, this is the master plan. This has a little bit more color on it. It shows the actual phasing that's being proposed. It shows the actual phasing that's being proposed. We're trying to create an attractive upscale development that is a mix of residential uses and with a high level of amenities. We're providing good connectivity for both vehicles and pedestrians. There are four connections to the FOST development. There are multi-use paths that connect to FOST that connect to the school site. And we'll run a, a long survey road and also out to, uh, 168 to connect with the FOST, uh, multi-use path. This next one shows you a little bit of a blow up of the mixed use area. And what we really want to create here is kind of a main street effect with good walkability, with, with shops, with, uh, second story dwelling units overlooking, uh. You know, park-like areas where you're going to have gathering areas, perhaps sidewalk cafes. This is the architect's, uh, rendering. This is looking at the site from 168. This is looking at it, uh, from with, looking toward 168 from within the site. And this is a close up. With elevations that show you the balconies on these upper story dwelling units that will be over. This central area here that you can just see one side of is the kind of the main street area. And that's where we're showing some outdoor dining areas. Uh, we'll have some park benches and this will all be, be walkable. And, and we particularly, you know, the, the, this is a different housing type that doesn't exist right now in, in Moyoc. It's going to be more affordable. It's kind of targeted toward public servants and, you know, particularly targeting teachers who might be able to live here and walk or bicycle to work nearby. This is a map of the school zones as currently defined by the Board of Education with pink being Moyoc, blue being, uh, Shawboro and green Central. And then those school zones were superimposed on the development plan. And you can see that dash line that runs through the middle here is, uh, the dividing line. The current dividing line between Moyoc and Shawboro. And there is, uh, 120 lots that are actually within the Shawboro School District right now where there's currently capacity. And actually, the first, uh, item in your, in your packet is a, uh, a letter from Mark Stefanic that just essentially just agrees with this map and that, uh. This is a, this line is correct and those lots are in, in those school zones. This is the phasing schedule. And we have five residential phases and six commercial phases. And this also shows when the other amenities are scheduled to be constructed. For example, here we're, in the first phase, we have the mail kiosk and, uh, RV and boat parking area being constructed. We have a, uh, a nature overlook and the main clubhouse being constructed in phase two. Uh, the dog park, uh, recreation area and pool in phase three. And then multi-use path that says in phase four, but it'll actually be constructed in stages. It will just be completed in phase four. This, uh, please.
Mark, can you get back?
Yeah.
Okay, explain the commercial piece.
The commercial piece is in six phases and phase A is the building that, let me show you where that is. This is the first commercial building. It's being proposed, which is about 10,000 square feet. It's commercial and it has, uh, seven, uh, second store, upper story, uh, dwelling units associated with it.
That's a what phase?
That's the first commercial phase.
That's A.
A, phase A.
Yeah.
You had anticipated time of 20, 2030 when starting that?
Yeah, it's going to be, you know, largely market driven. You're going to need some rooftops there before they, there are enough people to really support the, that kind of commercial. Uh, but between this and FOST and Eagle Creek, we expect it within a few years.
Okay.
If you would go to the second sheet in your packet, you'd be able to.
Now that I know the phase is uncommercial, if you could go back to that slide.
Sure.
And, okay, so the timing on that is not specified and that's more than six phases up there, though.
You're right, seven phases. It's easier to put numbers on it. I, I can't count by letters.
So again, we have no sense of timing on that.
I don't, uh, it'll. This one is the first fold out in your packet. And this is important because it shows the, the real phasing from a construction standpoint. What this is showing is all how all five phases will actually build out over time. And what the impacts of that build out would be on occupancy and then school impacts. So we're showing that the first phase would actually been, begin construction in January 2021 and go to record in August 2021. At that point, that's the, that's the tan line in the top line. After that, you go to, you'll start a model home and start pre-sales. And then following that, the blue shows custom home construction. And then you see that number eight that is at the, in the, in August of 2022. That represents the completion and occupancy of the first eight homes in the development. So it would actually be school year 2022 to 2023 when you'll see the first students in the elementary school. The red number there that is 10, that shows you how many students are expected in that school during that school year. And it's a conservative approach because if you look at those numbers, eight, four, four, four. That shows anticipated home occupancy on a month by month basis. The 10 students represent students that even if they don't move in until February or March of 2023, those students are included in the 2022, 23 school year. That's part of that 10, so those are accommodated. If they move two months before the end of school, they can still, they're still counted. And then we move through that, uh, just year, uh, phase by phase. And at the very bottom, you'll see numbers of new students per school year. For 2020 to 2021, zero, 21, 22, zero, 22, 23, 17, 23, 24, 25. And 24, 25, 18. And that's kind of summarized on this slide.
These are elementary school?
Pardon me?
Are they elementary school?
These are elementary school students.
So if I get that straight, school year 22, 23, we're going to have 17 additional elementary school students.
Seventeen.
Do they go into Shawboro, correct?
And the first two phases that we're proposing are in the Shawboro School District.
So the 17 and the 25 are Shawboro.
So, so going back, if you go back to the plat or the layout where the property or the, uh, school line is. So phases one and two are to the left.
They are.
The blue is, yeah, the blue, the blue is phase one and two.
It is.
And they're Shawboro.
And that's not Shawboro.
That's Shawboro, right.
And this is just a, a written summary of that, of what those school impacts are within the remainder of the development. Phase is spread out and the school impacts over additional years. Let me just kind of some briefly summarize what the zoning commitments are. As Ms. LaCicero said, there have been a number of drainage improvements that were committed in connection with FOST. We're continuing those commitments and expanding on them here into Flora. Uh, we're cleaning out Roland Canal farther west to the actual Eagle Creek Pump Station. And that was actually requested by Eagle Creek that we do that. We've agreed to that. Uh, there is a one-time clean out of the, of the Roland Creek across Flora. That's been committed as part of FOST. Now we're talking about setting up permanent easements and a permanent funding mechanism so that that maintenance can be ongoing in perpetuity. As we did on FOST, we'll be modeling the stormwater for the 100-year storm event and managing that event. We'll be constructing, um, and let me move to the, uh, next slide just so we can look at where some of these improvements are. This is the Roland Canal and this is the Eagle Creek Pump Station. So we'll be doing further cleaning out here. We're providing permanent 50-foot easements on both sides of, of this. We're actually setting up a stormwater management association whose sole job it will be to manage stormwater improvements throughout this development. Some of the people that were at the, uh, community meeting, and by the way, we got a lot of positive feedback from people at the community meeting. They thought that this was a, a good idea. Uh, and there were people in here that were real concerned about drainage because both Eagle Creek and ranch land have drainage problems right through here. So we have committed to building a new ditch along this property line. And putting in a berm that would keep any water from this new development from impacting those existing lots. But actually improving the ability to get water away from those lots and off of their site.
So where's phase one on there?
Uh, this doesn't actually show phasing, but, uh.
Well, ballpark.
Generally, generally in this area. We are providing central wastewater treatment. We are looping the county's water system. And let me go back to, let me just show you that where that's occurring. Right now, there's. There's no water on this part of Survey Road. So we're going to be building a new line from the other side of 168 up Survey Road. And looping this and Flora together and providing an opportunity for improved fire protection in this whole, whole area, which will eventually connect to the, to the school, uh, system.
Survey Road, except for the school's on obviously county water, but Survey Road, is that well water?
The, the school is on county water, but the water main ends at the, at the school site. It doesn't come further, further south. So we have a, uh, we propose this phasing agreement that'll be binding. We have, uh, proposed traffic improvements. And we'll get into that, that a little bit more in a few minutes. Pedestrian connectivity, reserving dwellings for local professionals.
So what is the fourth bullet mean?
The modeling of the stormwater.
Says model stormwater from Flora developments for the and 100-year storm event.
No, it's for the 10 and 100-year storm events.
And then how, you're prepared to come up with some way to reserve dwellings for local professionals?
We are. Whether the county can enforce that condition or not, it's something we're going to do because it needs to be done.
I suggest to you that the county, it's questionable whether the county has legal authority to acquire that as a condition.
Oh, it would not be.
And the enforcement of it is impossible. And so I would suggest that you not consider that as a condition.
And then last but not least, we're offering to contribute 22 acres for the new school to site, uh, to Currituck County. Looking at compatibility with the adjacent property, we have lots that are essentially the same width all the way and have about roughly the same number of lots within the same linear distance where we butt up against Eagle Creek. Looking at the context of the request. As Ms. LaCicero said, this is all full service. It has, this, this shows you the historic development patterns. You have 588 lots right here to the immediate west with Eagle Creek and Lakeview. To the immediate east, you have, um, 754 dwelling units already approved here between FOST and ranch land and Moyoc Farms. Due north, you've got 426. And, and all the, all this in pink has actually been zoned for commercial development. And the, the site that's shown there in green is the Flora property. And it essentially just completes the development in this part of Moyoc. And that essentially will complete the full-service residential, uh, development. Pardon me?
Look through those numbers. How many lots?
Uh, let's see, this is 588 right here. This is 754. This is 426. This is, um, 132.
It's a seven. It says 275, pardon, it's seven.
Well, the 275 is just ran, is just ranch land.
Oh, I got you.
But when you combine ranch land with FOST and Moyoc Farms, it's 754. And this is 410, just kind of right in the middle. So we certainly think it's, the development is compatible with the setting and the surrounding development and is appropriate for the area. If you would go to the next fold out in your packet. Looking at a soils map of Moyoc, and this is in there because there was a comment in the staff report that wasn't discussed at the planning board meeting, but has come up since about whether the soils are suitable, suitable for development here. So what you're looking at is really, this is the county's, uh, soil map that's been prepared for, for footings. The pink are Roanoke soils. This is our proposed development right here. It's partly pink and part, uh, the red is, is Cape Fear. If you look over here at the Currituck Station, it has basically the same soil types. You have pink on the Thrasher part and on the Winslow part and on the county's wastewater site. And red behind that on the Frank Williams and the, and the, um, Jarvis property. And then basically more of the same to farther west. So the soils are essentially identical and, um. And as the, um. The school folks already indicated they've had a soils evaluation done by a geotechnical engineer and determined that the soils on the site are suitable for development. As, uh, previously stated, we have had a traffic impact analysis done. The, uh, traffic engineering firm VHB completed that report. NC DOT's personnel, their traffic people. NC DOT's personnel, their traffic people and their regional and district office people have all reviewed and signed off on it. Lyle Overcash is with us from VHB, and he can address the details of that report and what those improvements are. Before I introduce him, though, I would like to mention in response to the comment about school bus traffic and whether the streets are too narrow or the design is appropriate. In response to that concern, we did three things. And the concern was raised because of the lack of adequate parking in some subdivisions. And so, people are parking on the street. And it's the parking on the streets that makes it difficult for the school buses to get through sometimes, particularly if they're parked on both sides of the street. So, what we have done is we have added on-street parking to the plan in the areas where we have space available to do that. We've increased the pavement radii at intersections to make sure school buses are accommodated on their turns. And most importantly, we have moved the houses back on the lots so that all the lots will have room to accommodate two-stack vehicles between the street and the garage. 27.
What is Eagle Creek, like 22 or something?
20.
20? I knew it was 20 or 22.
And with that, Lyle Overcash is going to come and talk to you about traffic. And he's got a... He doesn't have slides, but he's got some documents in your packet. All right.
That's slides, but it's saved.
Yeah, so you should have a text document that outlines the list of improvements and a little traffic figure. Again, Lyle Overcash with VHB, 940 Main Campus Drive in Raleigh. And then, this is a figure from our traffic analysis report. It kind of shows the lane markings where I think some of the earlier figures maybe there. I wonder if I can look back.
I don't think you'll be able to go back to what Lori was showing.
This one. This one's pretty good. So, the figure you have has lane markings on it where this one's missing a lane marking. So, I'll run through real quick. So, yeah, we looked at the intersection of Survey. This is the unsignalized portion of it. And when we did the traffic counts, literally no one takes a left here. They all, of course, go up to the signal. And that's why in the current traffic study and existing counts, you have no left turn. So, level service was a C. If you probably introduced one left-turning vehicle there, it would probably go to E or F. So, you asked a question earlier about McDonald's driveways or other driveways. At many of your unsignalized intersections up and down the main corridors, if you try to turn left, that's when you're going to run into the longer delays where it's E or F. And the way we measure delay is different for unsignalized intersection versus signalized intersection. And I can get into that a little bit later. But so, for this intersection, we decided for safety and operational to keep it just a right-out only. So, we're going to make this a restricted intersection where you can't turn left here now. No one does it now, but when you introduce the commercial here and the residential, it will be desirable. And we have the option of four different connections over to FOST to get over to their new traffic signal and then also then the existing traffic signal to the north at Survey. So, we're going to restrict this to right-out only. And then, we're going to... It's a five-lane road now, so we're doing re-straight this left-turn lane northbound. And then, we're going to construct a right-turn lane southbound on 168. And then, when you come interior to the site, this is about 750 feet. And so, you have a left-turn lane here going down to the main boulevard, a left-turn lane here going into this small commercial area, and then a right-turn lane at this internal intersection. So, we set it up where this internal stacking is good, where these folks can come in and circulate around. And with this being right-out only, it's true. It goes to a lover service E in the future. It's about 35 seconds. So, right now, it's like 15 seconds to make the right. In the future, it goes 35 seconds. And that's just a function of the measures that Highway Capacity Manual gives us.
You make the right or the left?
You make a right-only. We're going to keep it a right-only. And DOT, when they initially reviewed our TIA, the congestion management folks in Raleigh, we had suggested that you monitor this intersection and possibly signalize this left over to accommodate this... If you allowed the left here, it was like 900 seconds of delay. It's terrible. So, we went right out. So, in the future, we thought, well, maybe you needed to signalize the left over, and that would allow the right turn to turn out under signalization. But the DOT requested that we not signalize this location, even though it'd be a quick little two-phase signal and it would work quite well. The advantage you have on this part of 168 is all these intersections are Ts. T-intersections operate a lot more efficiently than a four-leg intersection because you have less phases. So, you have Ts. And the most efficient intersection you have is this kind of leftover-right-out design where you signalize the left end. But so, we left that where we need to monitor this one for signalization. And that would be something that when there's a separate study that's done for the school, that would be one thing we would look at is the timing, if that would even be needed. We ran some preliminary numbers, and it's still probably fine without the signal into the future, even with the school. But we didn't include the school in the TIA itself. I think the number she had quoted earlier on the trip generation, the 8380 is for Flora only. FOST was included in the background analysis. So, FOST is in the TIA itself. So, it's all in one. And that was the agreement when FOST came around, that we would... FOST would be in here, and then we have so Flora, and that all together would be together. And that's what we presented in the TIA. And so, the signals at FOST and the signal at Survey both remain at lover service B, which is... That's how we look at signals. We look at the overall delay. And so, they're at B with the main line of 168, which is more critical than side street. You know, you want the main line to be flowing good. And they say level service A and B during the AM and PM peak hours. So, that's how those operate. And you mentioned Moyoc Farms. Well, see, Moyoc Farms came in after this. So, technically, that's why it's not included in this TIA. Mark had us just run it real quick. It's 31 homes. It generates like 30 trips in the peak hour. So, they would all come out on FOST and would add one second of delay to that signal. So, I think DOT had mentioned it was not a big deal. Truly not a big deal, one second added delay. Not necessarily. The impact will be mainly in the morning peak hour. As you know, a school in the afternoon gets out at 2:30, 3:30. So, it doesn't correlate or overlap with the peak hour of commercial site or even the residential. So, the critical thing you have to remember for a school is that you want to accommodate all the afternoon pickup on the site. And so, that's the most critical thing that you need to look at for the schools. The actual ADT of an elementary school with 750 kids is less than 1,000. So, it's actually not as much traffic. It's just boom, it hits you in two little peaks and it's a little burst of 30 minutes. So, we do a lot of... Our firm does... One of the primary things we do is a lot of traffic work for the municipal and school transportation unit. So, we have multiple contracts with them. And so, even those contracts now with the DOT's cash flow has kind of been put on hold for right now. But those will probably be some of the first studies that come back. So, we do school studies across the state. The DOT is responsible for paying for the school studies and for the off-site. That was new legislation that's passed. So, the DOT is responsible for the schools. And what you would need to do for this as now, it would be a campus. You need to look at the middle school and the elementary school together. And you need to look at how they would flow. The gentleman mentioned, would the buses share a driveway? Or would you have an adjacent driveway and connect the two bus parking lots, have it on that side? You know, looking at this site, I would recommend that you would come in kind of mid-block with the school and have the entrance and then exit out here on Flora Boulevard. That way, you'd like to have a one-way flow when you look at elementary schools for traffic flow because you don't like them entering and exiting at the same time because of a number of conflicts. So, I would bring them in off Survey Road, have them exit here on Flora Drive and come out. And we ran those numbers, and these intersections worked fine in that regard. And then, that way, you just kind of punch this through, and your pedestrians can just flow on in to the school from this side. So, that's... You would have to probably on Survey Road, you obviously have to put turn lanes at the bus driveway and the main school driveway. But this setup will work fine. And then, you would just have to monitor this intersection and see how it does for signalization. Because you could pop in a signal for a leftover in the future. You know, DOT, they just wanted to hold off on it for right now. Trying to think if I covered everything that you guys were asking about. I think that was it.
So, the plan is for the school, three years, whatever, coming out of that, they're going to go out at the like unless they're going south? When they go to Flora, Flora was at Flora Boulevard. So, they come out of the elementary school, they'll come out there. If they're going... Well, most of them aren't going to go north anyway. But they would go out and go right?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it, you got to talk about redistricting. You know, where are these kids going to be living? We're assuming we're going to get a big bonus, a big kick with them all. You know, a lot of them living here locally and then over on, you know, the flight to the north. So, we're hoping we're going to get some capture with those. Right now, the flow is up in that 168. It's probably 55, 35, 70, 30, you know, to the north. That's kind of the balance of the traffic on the road. But they would... You know, they could come in, take a ride, go down south pretty easily, or they would go up and go up to the signal of a survey. You know, lost into the neighborhoods as well. And that's the reason you would want to do the study as a standalone study because it has a lot of special requirements. We have to develop transportation management plans. We would end up doing one for the new school. You'd have to do one for the existing school. You'd like to go back and check, make sure the existing school is operating like it should because we had a case at First Flight Schools where when we came in and put the high school in, the existing schools were backing out and causing a problem on Veterans Drive. And so, we had to fix the existing schools before we could put in the high school. And so, that's the thing. You have to make sure the existing schools are not blocking Survey Road before you come in and put a new school in it. So, that's one thing you would have to go in and check and develop.
They stagger them on times, too.
And they probably stagger them 30, 45 minutes anyhow. And that's some of the stuff we have to go in when you do a TIA for the schools, for the new schools. But for an elementary school, if it's 600 students, you need probably 1,300 feet of stacking distance internally. For a 750 student school, you probably need 1,600 internally. So, that's the thing with safety. It's to make sure you accommodate the stacking on the property. And the good thing about this setup is that you're not accessing the school off the main thoroughfare. You're accessing off a secondary road. And that's how we like to set up schools.
All right. You got it, brother?
Okay. Let's take a quick five. Deb's not going to make it if we don't. Stretch the lights for just a minute.
All right. Let's call the meeting back into order. Schwed, where you are. Where are you going?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Jamie Schwedler with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. I'm going to start with this handout in your packet. It should be a couple pages to the end. It was the last document added to your agenda. It starts with 2006 land use and consistent policies. I know it's been a long night, and I'm going to try to go as quickly as we can. But I really would like to highlight the consistent statements to support this zoning here tonight because in your staff report and from your staff presentation, you heard exclusively the inconsistent statements. We didn't hear about why the planning board voted for this in full. We didn't discuss the consistent statements that are supported by this rezoning. And I think it's important to go through that. And the reason I do is that the purpose of the consistency law, when you adopt that consistency and reasonable statement, is to do it with full information of the inconsistent and consistent policies, of what all the policies say in your land use plan. And the reason we know that is what's on your screen. David Owen's 2018 article that we visited in FOST that says that the purpose of the consistency law is a comprehensive analysis, looking at overall consistency with plans. It doesn't require absolute consistency with every single policy. And it provides you all information to balance and consider as you make the decision about what is right and best for the county. And so, I would like to note here that the planning board did not just vote 3 to 2 on this school board issue. That was one of at least six land use policies that they cited in their motion. Oh! Not quite the hook, but...
If anybody wants to do a ride-along tomorrow, I'll pick them up at 4:30.
Jamie will just be getting back to Raleigh.
So, it is accurate that the chair cited that he wanted to add to the motion that he was also in favor because of schools. But that was on back of the motion itself, which was a list of a lot of the consistent policies, which most of which are from the handout that I've handed you tonight, which we also had to provide the planning board because it was not in the staff report that went to the planning board. So, the chart you see here is what we emailed the planning board and what they read from in their motion.
Back up. You said the planning board did not get the consistencies?
The planning boards... The staff report that went to the planning board did not have a single consistent policy from the land use plan listed in it. Every single policy listed was inconsistent with the land use plan, almost verbatim of what you saw before you here tonight. And that's where this chart came from, is that we went and said, wait a minute. There's a lot of things consistent about this.
I think it's important to note that the planning staff did not approve of this, right? Is that correct?
They did not approve of this?
Right.
They asked for them to be consistent?
No, you guys didn't approve of the project, right? You recommended denial.
We recommended denial.
So, the reason they would have included... They would have included the recommendations based on what their recommendation was not in favor of. Right. So, you know, just like our document they prepared for us, our sample motion on the back, it does actually include, if you want to...
We did have that same, very similar sample motion before the planning board.
So, but it wasn't in the packet because the staff was not in favor of this. So, why would they present ideas in favor?
Well, that's a great point, Mr. Chairman, because the reason that they would present that is for the decision-makers to weigh both of those policies. And if you note, every single other policy, every single other proposal before you tonight listed only the consistent statements. And so, there was a note that there could be some inconsistent, but we're just going to focus on the consistent. Ours was the exact opposite. And I think it's...
I think staff was in approval of the other ones.
Right.
So, they used the consistency statements to justify their recommendation.
And they had motions for denial on the back.
It's the applicant's job to come up and say, here's the plans that we find consistent in our recommendations. But to address what Commissioner White just said, we get a briefing that helps us make decisions pro and con. And the ones for it are on this side, and the ones that are against it are on here or make staff's point and not. So, we have as part of our motion exactly what you're briefing us on.
Great. Well, let's get into what those...
If we were to approve it.
No, thank you. And let's get into what the... No, thank you. And let's get into what those policies actually say, because I think it does merit, um, not just listing the policies, but knowing what, uh, your actual land use plan says and why it supports the proposal here before you tonight. So the 2006 land use plan does designate this as a full service area. We covered that, that that is controlling in this particular situation. Policy A, A G six, um, says that, uh, for areas experiencing intense development pressure, new residential development, um, is allowed to locate in compact village-like clusters, preferably near existing non-agricultural activities and services. Policy H N one states the county shall encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for the location. Location and density factors shall include, uh, the following, and projects falling within the full service areas of the flume, like us, would be permitted at a higher density because the availability of infrastructure, as well as similarity to existing development pattern. Um, and your U D O says density may not exceed three units per acre in full service areas, the less, the location of those shown on the 2006 land use plan. What that means here is the, um, the acreage or the, excuse me, the density here is 1.83 units per acre gross density, consistent with that full service, um, area designation. Now, the U D O and the land use plan do not look at net density that was highlighted by Ms. LaCicero. I understand that was requested to be, uh, examined. But even in the feels-like situation, we're still coming in under three units per acre, which is consistent with the full service designation in your 2006 land use plan. And the way that we've clustered that development in compact village-like clusters near existing nonag, uh, near existing facilities and services, um, and in the full surface area, hits exactly with what your land use plan calls for in those two policies, uh, mentioned along the screen. As Mark's slide noted, we're oriented on Keratuck Highway as an infill site between two existing densities of comparable, um, size and clusters. And so we're really fitting in with your land use policies, um, with respect to land use and density. We're also consistent with the Moyacoke area policy emphasis, which is that, uh, policy emphasis is on properly managing the increased urban level of growth that this area is sure to experience over the next decade and beyond. These words were written in 2006, we're now here in 2020, and that's exactly what has happened. This area was predicted to experience growth, your plan was designed to accommodate that growth, and it notes that it's incoming under the increasing, um, development pressure as a bedroom community for the Tidewater area of Virginia. You heard, uh, the, the super, the, the Board of Education, um, Chair talk about the pressures coming over the border from Virginia and how there really isn't another site in this area that's ideal, uh, for the school. The same has been true with pressurement, pressure of development coming across the border. Um, and so when you summarize the Moyocoke area and the character, um, this really responds to that level of growth that you foresaw in 2006. Our request, clusters housing includes open space, um, it includes private or central sewer. Uh, again, we're in line with the density that's forecasted for this area, and we've addressed traffic, open space, drainage, schools, and utilities in our plans. We're consistent with the Moyocoke area emphasis as well. Um, we're also consistent with drainage and utilities policies. Policy W S seven notes that Keratuck County allows for the appropriate use of packaged sewage treatment plants as a means of achieving more efficient land use. That's incorporated in our, uh, proposal. Policy W Q three notes the county supports policies, plans, and actions to help protect the water quality of the county's estuarine system by preventing soil erosion and sedimentation and controlling the quality and quantity of stormwater runoff. Uh, W Q four deals with, uh, runoff and drainage and notes that post-development runoff shall not exceed pre-development volumes. Each of these policies is supported by the extensive drainage conditions, uh, that were outlined in the staff report and in, uh, Mr. Bissell's presentation. They're very similar to what you saw in the Foss development, um, but they have significant on and off-site drainage commitments, modeling of significant storm events, retain and release stormwater, um, and berming to protect adjacent development. Waste water is handled, uh, in that we're eligible for county water, if we're offering to treat wastewater on-site through a private wastewater treatment plant. All of these are consistent with that full service area designation, which anticipates additional density on this site because infrastructure is available and we're committing to, um, expand that infrastructure and provide additional. Um, you heard some, some concerns about transportation, um, and you heard from Mr. Overcash. I wouldn't, uh, belabor that too much, as, except to note that, um, there are three policies, I think, that are at issue here that we are consistent with. Policy, uh, T R twelve says new residential developments shall provide for the installation of paved public road, roadway and drainage infrastructure at the time of development. We're committing to that. Um, this policy is intended to prevent the creation of substandard developments that must later correct for infrastructure problems that could have been avoided. Policy C A one states the important economic tourism and commuting, uh, community image benefits of attractive functional major highway corridors through Keratuck County shall be recognized. We're orienting along that very highway. And policy T R eight states that local streets have been designed and built to allow for convenient circulation within and between neighborhoods and to encourage mobility by pedestrian and bicyclists. Mr. Bissell showed you the master plan, which included a lot of those elements about connectivity, allowing, uh, greenways and walkways for childrens to, to walk throughout the community and off-site to the, uh, to the school and, and commercial areas. Um, and Mr. Overcash also provided, um, details about DOT's review and the finalized TIA. I think it's important to note here that the level of service E is really a delay function. We're not talking about six lanes across of gridlock traffic. We're just talking about the specific movements, uh, that will have additional delay. That means a couple of extra seconds in the car before you're able to make the movement that we're talking about. So even though the TIA has not been done at this stage, and that was supported by DOT, who are the experts in this area, and V H B, another expert in this area, um, it doesn't mean that the school's going to come online and have a, a infrastructure failure. What it means is there's going to be some timing and staging that's looked at of how these movements are made. And it's not possible to say where that staging should happen until you have a site plan. This is all standard procedure, this is how DOT operates throughout North Carolina, not just in Keratuck County. And I think it's important to note that despite the staff's concerns, we rely on the experts who have examined this, who have degrees in traffic, uh, control and, and construction and mitigation, and not only a private, uh, engineer, but also DOT, who's ultimately responsible for these roads, has said there's not an issue here. Um, and I thank you, Mr. Beaumont, for raising that, um, that you confirmed that with, uh, Um, the adequate public facilities ordinance, there was a discussion of this in the staff report. Um, I'd just like to remind the board that, uh, section 6.6 of the U D O is a special use, uh, a special use permit standard. It's not a rezoning standard. Now, can you consider, uh, the fact of school capacity and where those plans are and all the testimony, um, from the school board? Absolutely. But what we heard tonight is not a situation where, because, uh, there's not a room for every single child that will be generated today by this development, is not a reason to deny this rezoning. You have a reason for putting that 6.6 in your special use permit standard, and that is, at that point in time, the two-year window kicks in. Not at rezoning, we don't look at rezoning, what's on, on the ground now, or what's in the, on the ground two years from now. And that's important, because if you adopt that standard and you follow what staff has asked you to do, you can't approve another school in Keratuck County until it's two years away from opening its door at a rezoning stage. And that's not what your U D O says. Your U D O says when somebody comes in for a special use permit, the facilities have to be in place or programmed to be in place within two years. That's the time you look at it. And the reason you do that is because of the discrepancy between the actual capacity and the committed capacity that Ms. LaCicero admitted to. Um, Mr. McCord asked, or, uh, Mr. Etheridge asked the question about how many of these, um, approved lots are out there without a special use permit attached to it and no, no students being generated? And I don't think we know the answer to that. We don't know when that, uh, committed capacity, uh, list has been updated. We don't know if there's hundreds of lots out there generating these phantom children that have never matriculated into the school. And so what we do is we look at those actual kids that are attached to that special use permit. And if there's a long time between when your rezoning happens and when your special use permit happens, that's on the fault of the developer. We can't start counting those kids and saying, because those facilities are not in place at rezoning, we're not gonna look at a real solution to a real school problem today. We can look at that at special use permit. Um, and I think if you take anything into account, you should take into account what the school board said. We are at a crisis, we are in a situation where time is of the essence, and there's not another site that's this far along with this much, uh, added infrastructure and cost savings. Now, I'll respect the opinion of Mr. McCree, and you can disregard, um, the, the swimming pool, and you can disregard the specifics. But I do think you can take into account the fact that there is a cost savings and efficiency when you locate right next to another middle school, and you're able to share spaces, and you're able to run less buses, and you're able not to have, uh, that many routes through, uh, through a community. And so you can take those things into consideration, if, to the extent you're gonna take into, to school capacity, um, in general. I would also like to note that there is no requirement that if, that an official policy be taken on the modular schools in order to find adequate public facilities at the, at the zoning stage or beyond. There's many tools that the school board has in play. I think that's something that they'll, um, come to discuss with you all during this new working group that you're going to be discussing. But redistricting, while unpopular, is a tool. It's possible on our site, where there are no children yet today, something that we would be willing to, to discuss with the board. Um, and so that's why it's not appropriate to say, there's just no solutions here. Um, and just to correct, I think, some of the, the, well, let's get to the, the slide where we can show how some of these kids are gonna come online.
Prudent for us to consider these fact-life school adequate public facilities?
Right now, I mean, why would we approve this project, change, to go forward, knowing it, it, it may not be implemented, or we might have been able to give, approve a special use permit, because we know right now, we're not building a school in the next two years. That's gonna be four years out, or maybe five, before we actually have...
We can't vote on it for two years from November. It can't even be voted on.
Right. So, but, so my question to you is, do you not think it's prudent for us to have that full picture and scope? I mean, it is, I think it should be.
I think it's prudent, I'm sorry, were you done?
Go ahead, yes.
I think it's prudent for you to take it into account, and the way that we have already accounted for it for you, is that I can tell you there aren't going to be any new students for two years, because of the phasing schedule that we've committed to. And when those students do come online, they're gonna come online in the Shawboro area. And when they do come online, for the two years, the first two years that we'll generate, so we'll generate no students for, for two years, then we'll start generating, and those wouldn't even fill up the two modular units that you all approved tonight. That's 80 new seats. We wouldn't even fill those up.
That's, did you not catch the point? They're already at max capacity in Moyocoke Elementary School with those two mobile...
No, no, the way that, the way that the, the numbers were, and we can pull back the slide, is that with those mobile homes, Moyocoke is at 640 this year. It will go down to 609 in 2021. So it's at 640, finishing out whatever year we're, we're, we're in now, to the extent we are. And then in 2020 to 2021, the capacity will be 640. The ADM, yes.
No.
You can, Laura, you wanna pull up the sign?
It's at 609 now, and it'll go down, they, they think that it will go down...
To 609, with the mo, with the mobile classroom.
In 2021.
It remains, it does not increase.
Right.
Because the ADM has to go down per state statute.
No, not, the capacity has to go down per the state statute.
Class size, it's...
Goes down.
The class size for K through three will be reduced.
Correct.
And so therefore, that's gonna impact the capacity.
Correct, right.
And 21, in school year, 21, 22.
So, I've got this...
That's what I'm, right.
I have the chart pulled up. In August of 2021, the capacity for Moyocoke Elementary with the mobile classrooms goes to 609.
From 640, from 640 next year.
So in August of 2021, if the classroom reduction's fully implemented...
You underst... Am I not getting this?
Can I restate it one more time? So with the, the 80 new seats that you all approved with the modular classroom contract at the work session, that takes the capacity of Moyocoke Elementary for 2020 to 2021 to 640, correct, Mr. Cyclother?
We've got one year of capacity.
We've got one year of capacity.
No, we have one year at 640.
Uh-huh.
Okay, and during which time the, the ADM is 609. Then at 2021, it goes down to, to 609. Okay, so at 609 in, in 2021, and then presumably continuing further. But the school board has already talked about ways that they're going to be able to, to accommodate for that capacity, either through additional mobile units or through redistricting the actual students that are on our site.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would submit that, that certainly this would be an important time for, if you are concerned about school capacity numbers going forward, that rezoning is a time that you, as a legislative decision, you, you seriously consider that, because as you understand...
That's, that's the point.
Upon, upon a rezoning approval and you move into a use permit quasi-judicial hearing, if the applicant presents sufficient evidence to, to meet their burden, then absent any contra evidence, um, they are due approval. So you put yourself in a position that is not as flexible or discretionary if you're in that.
This way they're asked about the number of lots, um, and this is not updated, we updated it in January, but the remaining number of lots in Moyocoke Township, 1,303, um, out of a total of, uh, 2,151, that have, um, some level of approval, either the built-out final flat, construction drawings, or preliminary flat.
So we've got a thou, roughly a thousand units that are yet to be built, that are kinda paper kids. Is that... Nice. Okay.
And, and I'm not disagreeing with Mr. McCree. I think he's, he's explaining and reiterating what Ms. LaCicero said, is that this is a legislative decision and there'll be a quasi-judicial decision becoming after this. However, if this is denied tonight, how are you going to build another school in Keratuck County? You're not gonna build in Moyocoke Station, because guess what? That's the same school district we're talking about now. And if the capacity doesn't exist today, then it can't exist for Moyocoke Station either.
Which I think was the risk we posed to the Board of Education when they started going down this path, that they were looking at a lot, that, or a chunk of land that was part of a subdivision, potential subdivision, and they were putting all their eggs in a basket, that we weren't sure, based upon, I'm, I didn't see you there in Moyocoke Elementary School last year. And I was there when, two weeks before the start of school, the school, the superintendent got up and said, "We're overcrowded." And I think this board has spent the last school year waiting for them to come up with a plan, and I don't think, I feel any more comfortable today than I felt when he floated redistricting. And the, the degree of frustration by our constituents to hear that line get delivered when it got delivered is not gonna go away. That's gonna be the same reaction that folks are gonna have. And, and, you know, I hope Ohio loves their, their new whatever, because that's the best thing that happened to this county in recent history, because we do not have a plan for the school yet. And I think we'll get there, but we're not there now.
What about the first twenty lots in Charlotte? The first phase of construction taking us through 2020?
That puts us down a path that we can't stop.
I mean, we're gonna have to build another school, and I think Mr. Cyclother brought a good point, or is like, we, the county, like, we have Michelle, who does a great job, our county buildings, we build something, it's usually done close to budget, it's usually done either on time or maybe even early. Um, you know, and I mean, I think, and I think they accepted that one, whatever, the 1.2 or 1.6. I mean, we need, I mean, we gotta do something. I mean, I, you know...
Agreed.
I mean, we all, I think all seven of us agree that.
Our, our, our decision here tonight should not be predicated on that school being located on this property. This, this property needs to stand on its merits and not pressure the board to make a decision because we get some dirt, or the school board gets some dirt for new school. It's nice to...
And I, and I think that needs to be separated out, right? And that's important, and that's when you get into contract law, we start getting close to that, you know, that shoulder that's not a good area to be in, so, um, but I think we've beat this, right this moment, so...
Uh, yeah, I, 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 I would take issue with that, because there's certain things called contract zoning, and that was outlawed years ago. This isn't it. We're not saying we will, we will give you all these things as long as you, as long as you're promising to rezonate, and there's no backdoor dealing. I met Karen today at the hearing, never met her before in my life. And what we're saying is, we are offering this to you as a school site, inclu, and we're including it with the, with the rest of the land, because that's all that's available. Every single school site you're gonna see is not gonna come to you alone, it's gonna come to you on these large tracts that are for sale, if you can even get them for sale. And so it's an offer to you, that's not a contract, it's a, you know, you're free to approve or deny it, but I think it is important to take into consideration the policies that were in your land use plan in 2006 that talked about this exact thing. In policy A G three, it said county, county actions concerning infrastructure and regulations shall serve to direct new development first to targeted growth areas near existing settlements identified as full service areas on the flume, that's us. Policy S F one, Keratuck County shall support and actively engage advanced planning for the location of new schools. Such locations shall serve to reinforce contiguous growth patterns near existing developments, rather than promoting sprawl and more rural locations. We're not talking about contract zoning, we're talking about fulfilling the policies that you have had in place since 2006, trying to solve that problem with your own policies. And this is one of the solutions that could get you closer. Policy SF2, the county encourages offers of land for the siting of new schools, particularly in conjunction with related community development. That is this offer to a T. You couldn't describe this project any more closely. Offers of land for the siting of new schools, particularly in conjunction with related community development. That, that policy is also not evaluated in the staff report, and I think it really is a very important one. We've reserved the school site land in the full service, service area of the Flume. 120 of the lots are within the Shawboro Elementary School District where capacity exists today. We've reworked, we reworked our phasing so that we would start with Shawboro where we knew there was some capacity, and we'd stay away from generating kids into Moyac. We've also included a phasing schedule that really hits on the issue here, and I'm going to get to that. So if you look at our phasing schedule, this is another area that we did, that we included in our offer so that it respond to your land use plan. Because in Appendix G, the infrastructure analysis of Moyac area in 2006 says, "It is essential to remember that all of these students will not be entering the school system at one time." So if you look at the school year, and you look at the, the plats of the phases recorded, that we have committed to a timetable of when we'll record plats, and we've looked at Mark's fold out chart of when those students would be generated, when they'd actually matriculate. What you see there is it zero students in 2019, 2020 year that just ended. Zero students generated in the 2020 to 2021 school year. The first school year you generate, first school year you record plats, you record plats in phases one and two in 2021, 2022, we're not generating any students because those, those plats are being recorded, those homes are going to be built, the certificate of occupancy needs to be issued, the kids can't move in right away as soon as we record the plats, it's got to go through the development process. So if you look at the staging that we committed ourselves to, the first year we generate any students is 2022 to 2023. We only generate 17 students, and because those students are coming from phases one and two, they're coming into Shawboro. The first year we generate students, we generate 17 of them, they all go into the Shawboro School District. That's a restriction we're putting on ourselves. Sure.
Mr. Cyclother, what, what year do you see us land in a school realistically on the ground? Two years to get into funding?
Well, I mean, my, my initial estimate was if we had a site secured by, by June 1, secured as an under ownership, and we could be headed down that path, was a timetable of August 2023, and that was if we had the $11 million.
With funding, right. Based on that new, based on the new.
So you're looking at a bond referendum if it goes that route in November, maybe spring of 2022. Let's say that gets passed, we've got to go to bond, let's say we can start some design work ahead of that time. I mean, at, at the earliest, I'd be comfortable August 2024.
Okay. So August of 2024 puts you guys out on Phase 3 and Phase 4.
Well, actually, if you look at the chart, 2024 is the first year we generate any students for Moyac Elementary. All of the other years, we generate the students in Shawboro.
Eight coming in in 2023 in Phase 3, looking at this, I'm looking at this right. Or eight homes, is it, 25, okay, I got it. 25 would impact between the various phases in 23.
The 20, the last one.
So what we've done with the fold out chart is divided up by school year.
That's 18 there, 24. Okay.
And said in 2023, it'll be a total of 25 kids. But we've reorganized the phasing, so phases one and two are in Shawboro. So by the time those 17 kids come on, come online in 2022, they're coming into the Shawboro District without any redistricting, without any modular units whatsoever, existing capacity. 2023, another 25 kids, same situation. The first time we generate kids in the existing Moyac District is 18 kids in 2024. That wouldn't even fill up one of your modular classrooms that you just approved tonight. So we are going above and beyond as much as we can to restrict ourselves to do exactly what your land use plan says, to remember all these students will not be entering the school system at one time.
So all the phases then, up to 20, up, up through 2023 is strictly in the Shawboro.
That's right.
So Phase 3 is all Shawboro?
No, sorry, so Phase, Phase 3, let's see.
2022, 23 is all Shawboro, and then 23, 24 is all.
Yeah, there, you almost have to do a de, I don't remember.
I think, I think it's, I think it's eight. I think it's a total of 11 kids in Moyac in September of 2023, and 14 kids in Moyac.
Okay.
September of 2023.
Okay, so, so we've got some kids in Moyac, thank you Ben, in, in 2023. But the, the point is, with the existing capacity of Shawboro and the new modular units, which we don't have to decide whether that's the best method or not, Mr. Cyclother said himself that the school board decides that, will, will, will support that. They educate, we legislate.
Okay, so then, just thinking this through then, if 2023, 24 comes into play.
We don't have school.
The school capacity's not going to be there, that means you could potentially have to delay Phase 3 or 4 in a year. That's correct.
Well, we wouldn't have the authority to require them to delay that phase because it'll come through for the use permit.
It'd have to be in the use permit to recognize.
Use permit though, could we spell that out?
Public facilities.
Is that something later we could do?
Yeah.
Use permit saying.
That would be, yeah, both parties have to agree.
Phase 3, 3 is pretty rough.
Yeah.
Both parties have to.
That's like, we could, they, they would be delayed until the school came online?
Because if there weren't adequate public facilities, they couldn't have Phase 3 or Phase 4.
I mean, we'll be required to show how those adequate public.
Yeah, we would be approved if we could. Well, I would, I want to.
Man, I think, I would give the authority to, to approve phasing.
You're not going to approve all the phases in the first S U P.
We, no, we did. We did the boss.
You can, you can require each phase to come in for a special use program. We've done that before.
If, 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 if they come in and present it that way.
Yeah.
So we could, again, based on what all, we could, we could approve Phase 1 and 2, and they would have to come back and go up to the school, don't you sound? And then if they approve that, the school would have to be on track to be able to apply that. And we would deny it until the school were there. I mean, is that what you're, is that what you're saying?
Didn't, but didn't we do that with Wensworth Pads? They didn't?
I thought possibly approve the whole preliminary plat as a new permit.
Yeah, but they got.
One through five, I think Phase 1 through five.
Yeah, we phased it.
Yeah. And they presented their phasing schedule, and we accepted that phasing schedule.
Right.
So.
Which we're willing to do here.
One use permit.
At the special use permit stage.
When I'm looking at the report that staff has given on page 177, it says, "Based on the data, appears that the development will generate 71 students in the Moyac School District and 31 in the Shawboro."
At completion.
So the Tischler study focused on .25 elementary students for single family homes. There isn't a, a ratio for apartments, which generally have fewer students, but even assuming that it's the same ratio, .25, that's 71 students over the whole build out. So the 71 students aren't coming next year, or two years or three years.
At completion.
Right. Yeah, and I think that the important part there is because that's going to be timed with the market rate of the commercial, which is, is going to come later than the residential because you've got to have the rooftops on the ground. Those apartments are most likely going to come later. So we're talking about a situation of that school will probably be a reality before the, the apartments and the commercial is.
The open, that you say you have to have 100 apartments, so how many students would that be?
In the Moyac Township, how many lots are built out?
Is it 1,300?
It's a 1300, uh, 1300.
That's actually a count of blocks too now.
And then, uh, would be the right, how many students? Uh, this rule is correct, but that's taken into account in the Moyac on the block. So, uh, it would be, so it would be like 900 lots, so it would be 450.
But we don't know.
225.
Yeah.
So just so we can get some more clear on this, if the help needed to decide about. If, again, it's a different thing, if the dummy's done and then it comes back for a special use permit, we can, we can just approve the special use permit that reflects to the Shawboro Elementary Districts, and then we require them to come back and come off right, with your way of coming back on stage at phases three or four, and then at a time frame, well, we can see what the school's.
I, I think that what would have to happen, and I'm going to go with a lot of hypotheticals here, is that the applicant would have to bring a use permit application in with only phases one and two.
Right.
Because if they brought in phases one through five, I think it's five, is that right? One through five, then you've got to make a decision whether you're going to approve or deny the, the whole thing.
Okay, so based on the, okay, I'm just saying, so, I mean, the applicant could do that they wanted to.
They wanted to.
If they wanted to, they could, okay.
That's really up to the applicant.
That's up to them, yeah, I just, and that is an option.
That's the risky run, is that they come in and say, we're going to do it all, and then.
Well, then, then that's a risk.
An adequate public facilities could kick in.
But if they come in through one and two, and it's just reflect Shawboro, right now Shawboro can handle it.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Well, right, yeah, the capacity at Shawboro, I think, is it 90%?
We got a little, we got a little wig wearing down here.
They changed the 121.
And I'll tell you, another thing that's worth having a conversation with, is how many kids are in Moyac that don't belong in Moyac?
Oh, I can, I can name a few, but I'm not going to do that in me.
Or in Shawboro that don't belong in Shawboro.
Right.
That transferred, you mean, or?
They should be back in camp.
Yeah, the 21, 22 for the school year, school year 21, 22, with the new class sizes, Shawboro is at 90%. Right now, they're 87% of that.
So Shawboro's not a problem.
No, it's not, so, so then technically they could do that.
Right, too, what Ms. Stone was saying earlier, FOST is in the Shawboro district. There was a use permit preliminary plat for 301 lots in there that was approved, so.
Okay, how many students are that last 10% at Shawboro?
Well, if you're saying in 2022, Shawboro is at 90%, that raw number for capacity is 622.
So 62 students.
62 students.
Which we wouldn't generate, uh.
Yeah, but you're not the only developers.
Understood.
And all it takes is a Beaumont family to move in.
You're done.
No comment on that one.
Can you put that on the special use?
No Beaumont family.
Well, I know we've been at it for a long time. I think this, this chart really is important to show how many constraints we are putting on ourselves to try to balance out the impacts even at this stage, so that we are not overburdening the schools, and we're taking into account the changes that you all have faced with COVID and the delays in, in the expenditures. And I think what you'll see is with that phasing in place, we're already thinking about it at this stage, and we'll follow through in the special use permit stage. So I think we've shown tonight the consistency with each of these policies and density, the Moyac small area plan growth, drainage and utilities, transportation, water, schools, open space, and fire. And, and I think it's important to note, just quickly, that each of these areas are, are hit with exact correlations in the conditions. The 22-acre site is a condition, it's appropriate for you to consider based on the school policies that I read out earlier, that directly encourage the offer of land for the siting of new schools. The drainage improvements will help the neighbors and improve on the already commitments that we've listed in FOST, that's conditions H and I. We're looping into the county's water system that will improve fire flow, that was at the request of staff, and we complied. The hickory and pedestrian connectivity is accounted for in the TIA, which has been approved by the experts, and I don't think in this situation it's appropriate for us to second guess what the experts have told us about that capacity, and that there will be a TIA-approved or conducted with the school that's consistent with their policies statewide, and Currituck County should follow the same pattern. We've shown you how we've satisfied adequate public facilities at this stage. Recall that it's not a two-year window, that doesn't kick in until the special use permit stage, but to the extent you're going to consider it, I think you should take into account the school board being here tonight in good faith, and stating that there is not another site that's ideal and suitable for them in this location. This location where you've already committed a great deal of time and resources in Currituck Station and wanting to see the growth in this full-service area, we're providing that solution here, and I think denying this rezoning tonight will not provide an answer for the capacity problems that you have today, it will only make those, those worse. I, I think it's also appropriate to consider the savings that the school does realize and the kind of the shared infrastructure and notes that, that the school board made, and it's reasonable and in the public interest because it addresses each of the factors that you're called upon in the UDO to consider. So I appreciate your time tonight, I know it's been late, but I do ask that you think seriously about the consistent policies, because they do outweigh the inconsistent policies in this situation, and provide a real solution to a real school problem that the county has faced for years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I should state that if the county attorney wishes us to strike the workforce housing condition as a condition, we will, but we'll still commit to it, but not as a, a condition in the zoning.
It's great to commit, I just don't know how in the world the county would be able to either require it or to assure that going forward it was always in place and available.
So we'll strike it from the terms and conditions if that's an issue, but we'll, we'll consider it, we'll still be doing it, just not as a zoning condition.
Would it be appropriate for us to put a condition in there now, if we approve tonight, that they can't come in for SUP for phases three and four, for the phases that will impact Moyac Elementary until such times as we have, adequate public facilities that we started that? Assuming they're agreeable to that condition line. I'm just thinking about protecting us, they show up with all the phases, right? Justin's been true to his word on other stuff, so, you know, but.
I guess I would lean to it, if you place that as a condition that they agree to, they would be hard for us to challenge that. I guess the other side of that is whether that's an appropriate condition to place upon a rezoning.
Well, that's why I'm asking you.
Because, because, you know, the ordinance does allow for an applicant to come forward with a use permit application, it's got the appropriate zoning.
Okay, so.
What did they offer as a condition?
Well.
You have more teeth if we may put it in there, wouldn't it?
Well, they would.
I worry about the situation where there's a different solution that this, this new committee is going to be coming up with that wouldn't allow us to, to meet whatever.
I think, I think I would suggest that, that you not do that. Okay. I don't think the ordinance is, would clearly allow for that.
Then we're back to then, we, we have some property owners that want to rezone their property to be able to sell it, and then, so, and then after it gets rezoned, then we have a potential special use permit to come before the board after that, and if it doesn't meet the guidelines for the school systems, if it's not properly presented, they risk of it being denied.
Right.
So if they come before the board after the fact, they need to come with the appropriate special use permit.
Right.
Application, or they could potentially get it denied.
They could run afoul of it, right.
And if they do that, or they just do the Shawboro, Shawboro's the only option they have right now.
Right. Okay.
Isn't it harder to?
Well, as, as I said, you know, the applicant will put on their case, and if they meet their burden, then, then they are due issuance of their use permit.
Unless the school's.
Unless there are persons in opposition that present, or, or other evidence in opposition that outweighs the applicant's presentation of evidence and their prima facie case.
I would like to clarify one thing. Chairman Edred, earlier tonight, she was saying how zoning, there's always this ag zoning that's on these sites. Ag, we do allow elementary schools and middle schools in a ag zoning with a use permit. So we were, staff was concerned this whole time about the zoning, asking a zoning approval, so that then the, the school site becomes, becomes this pivotal point, you know, that they're asking for zoning approval for the, we can say the school site, and we were very concerned about that, but it is currently zoned ag, and a middle school and a middle school could be there with a use permit.
Well, they could build one.
With the, with the PDR, with the PDR, then they could build much more, many more houses than with the ag zoning.
But what I would say was the ag, you can build a guy.
Yes.
Build, build schools.
Okay.
How a school.
The other question I think we've gotten to look at also is, when you build a school, we're talking 700 students?
750.
You're not even going to fill Moyac Elementary or that school half-full.
There's a middle school to think about, too, down the road. How does that impact as these kids move through and impact that middle school?
Won't have to haul the middle classrooms, won't have to make.
Or, or that school was designed to be expanded.
Moyac.
Middle.
Yeah.
It's just like Shawboro and Chardeburg.
They talked about last time utilizing the elementary school for a vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some, no, that, that went off the trail, so. Okay, Ms. Weller, do you have anything else?
I do not, unless you have questions for me.
I know you're tired, you gotta drive to yourself.
Thank you.
All right, well, at this point, any more questions for staff before I jump into public comments? Okay, I'll open up public comment at this time. Denise said Mike's not allowed to talk. Mike, did you get him to talk, right?
I do have one question. Oh, you, you brought my.
Gotta go up to the mic. Yep, gotta get you on posterity.
Is this, is this?
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry, Denise Hall, 174 Old Jury Road. Is this, is this development, is this land in the original small area plan as it was addressed when they had all those meetings? Was, is this, is this area, was this area included in the Moyac small area plan?
Yes.
That's, okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Hall. Robert Hunt, Kurt? Yep, I think we had some people sign up for this.
The gateway.
The gateway.
She's in the parking lot still.
I've got three on here so far. John Flora.
John Flora Senior owned the farm. When he died, my aunt, Miriam Davis, and my father, John Flora Junior, number two, they inherited it. When my aunt Miriam Davis died, her half of the farm was inherited by Sandy Fost and Iris O'Connor, and they immediately, after her death about four years ago, requested a rezoning of their half of the Flora farm. My father died a little bit over a year ago, and so our application follows his death. We never wanted to make any kind of move on the farm until after my father and my aunt were dead, and so now we're asking you to approve the subdivision, or approve the rezoning in the same way that was approved for my cousins. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else want to speak tonight? Okay, close the public comment.
One more, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we, we are willing to offer to, to a condition, if it's acceptable to, to the county, that we won't file for a special use permit on phases that.
Three, four, five until, you know, try to work something out where, where if there is adequate public facilities.
I would say we wouldn't file for phases for which there isn't adequate public facilities in Moyac Elementary School, since that's the one that's the, that's having the, the issue.
All right.
Is that something?
I can get the book out?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Well, I think it would be prudent on you not to file for those, because it would put you at risk of having the whole thing.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, we just talked, and that's, that's the plan anyway, whether it's a condition or not, we, we won't be able to file for it when we can't prove it, so.
Right, you'll be coming through with that in mind as you work through this, assuming it passes tonight.
If you're not comfortable accepting it.
Nah, well, yeah, I don't, I don't think we need a condition.
I just don't know that that'd be an appropriate condition.
Well, that's our intent, so.
Okay, thank you.
Because the, I mean, can I ask a question to Kevin? Because the ordinance for adequate public facilities, if this was approved, would knock that out, correct? If there wasn't the, if, say, the school wasn't open three years from now, or whatever.
Well, I mean, it's going to depend on what evidence they present, and you recall that in the past, they brought forward a school capacity expert, I guess, for lack of a better term, from Charlotte, and, and made some kind of presentation, as I recall, that perhaps our methodology is not the best or only way to determine school capacity. So if you get into a hearing and you've got evidence that is supportive of a position that there is plenty of capacity, when our numbers say there's not, I mean, that potentially opens the door to, if you do not approve it, and there's no evidence that would support a denial, and you deny it anyway, that we end up in.
Here it works. That was, that was part of my concern when the, the trio came up, and that's, you know, if we apply what was used last year, in the last two years, and then going forward, there is no consistent process that, that we've demonstrated where we come up with school capacity. And I don't, you know, as, I want to see science, I want to see math, I want to see whatever was used, not just it feel, felt good this way. And, and until, you know, I'm glad Dr. Lutz is on board, because I think he's going to bring a lot more of that analytical capability, but that could go the wrong direction, right? I mean, it, that could go backwards, and, anyway, I, I have, I think that, that looks great, right? But I have, I, coming out of COVID, we still don't know what that's going to look like. I am really apprehensive about doing anything that puts us, you know, in an ability to not control it, if it, if it, what?
I'm just thinking, okay, so, if a school says their capacity is this, is it our problem?
I'm sorry?
If the school says they have adequate public facilities, the school board says that, whether or not we believe them, or think that they do, is that our problem? They have said, we can handle it, bring them on.
Oh, I'm, I'm not suggesting it is.
Right, and that, so, and talk about, I share your same thoughts, right, that they, we may not trust that they are really grasping the capacity and what that means, but is, is it really our problem?
I'm looking at it from.
They announced this they have.
After now, but in that, and that.
I'm looking at it from.
But we know on Thursday they're going to.
You have to look at it now.
I'm looking at it from a consistency, in less than 12 months.
Right.
The way we look at adequate policy, or public facilities, from a school perspective, in, in less than 12 months, we've changed our philosophy.
Right.
And that all started two weeks before school started.
This is Chairman.
Yes.
We, we as a board, last year in our vision, and we, we said we want to, want to manage growth, and then we had a work session, and one of the ways we were advised and encouraged to manage growth is by not rezoning property. Am I, am I right in that?
One of the tools on the tool belt is to not allow more than.
And to me, that, that's the problem I have here, is we don't know, that number, 8,380 trips, that's staggering. We, we don't know the impact that FOST is going to have, and I, I just, it, it worries me for many reasons, schools, traffic, that we, we don't know what the impact of one's going to be, but we're steaming ahead seemingly for this one, against everything that we talked about in that visioning session, and to me, that's, that's what I, I'm struggling with here.
And I think our, you know, to, to follow on that point, you know, we had the election proves that the voters didn't want to see growth by who they brought back in, and there were two pro-growth individuals that were, you know, lined up to, to be here, and they were, they said no to them.
Well, we just voted to approve to rezone 3,500 homes in Currituck Station and all that stuff, and for the paper, they're starting to move dirt next week for something commercial that nobody even owns yet, so, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, the school's kind of put us behind the eight ball on some of it, which is not our fault, you know, but, I mean, like you said, I mean, if it's, if it's, there's a lot of pluses to this site for, for that reason, and I know we're not supposed to do it just for that reason, but there's a lot of other stuff that Ms. Weller stated that it, it fits, and, I mean, if you sit here and read the stuff, I mean, I, I get where, you know, how do we approve a PDR for Currituck Station, PDR, CS, whatever it is, for 3,500 homes, but then we're going to say no to a PDR for something with 400 or whatever?
Well, the potential, they still have to come in, they have to rezone, they have to go through the same permitting process for Currituck Station that we did, they're much, they haven't even taken, no one's taken down any land.
And there's a school site that's going to be part of that, is the vision.
Right, it's proposed, so that, that's not quite.
And it might be to cut the cheese, too, I mean.
That's not an apples-to-apples, and I get, I take your point, that, that, yes, we did approve that, and, and when you look at it on the surface, but it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, because it's so far off.
Yeah, and then, I mean, we're, we're in a school crisis, where Beaumont made the comment, where you've got a kid hanging out the window, or nothing, I don't think we're to that level.
He's got a hole in it a couple of months ago.
Yeah, but, I mean, like you said, I mean, that's a, I mean, just to be honest, that's a, I mean, from what I've heard in the community, that's a selling point to it, you know, I mean, there's, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff that fit, I mean, there's, you know, I mean, we're behind the eight ball, and that's not, it's not this board's fault.
I, I think we've got a lot to digest.
Yes.
And the school board said Thursday night, this coming Thursday night, they are going to vote to say they've got adequate facilities, to address what you said, Kitty, and I think we ought to delay voting on this tonight till our next meeting, to give us time to digest, because, what is it, 300 and some pages in the packet tonight?
399.
And, I'm not comfortable really jumping out and taking a vote on it tonight.
Well, that, to me, looks like we're just putting it off so the school can tell us we have adequate.
Well, and, and digest.
I think it's like Commissioner Jarvis said, we said the vision was going to be to control growth, and I truly believe that people definitely put Mr. Beaumont and myself back on because they felt like we were going to try to control growth, and for us to just put it off, it was a lot of pages, but over 100 of them were the traffic analysis. We talked about this, and talked about this, and talked about this. It's just not for schools, it's the traffic, it's the fire, it's the sheriff's department, it's just so many things that we have to take in consideration, and I really can go ahead and make a decision or not, because the people, the people have told us they want us to control growth in Moyac.
Well, we just approved 3,500 homes, what's the difference? 3,500.
That was a vision that we had with the Currituck.
Oh, we approved it?
And that was including the residents of Moyac.
Yeah.
Well, this is in the small area plan, too.
This was what the people of Currituck County and Moyac decided.
The, Currituck Station's a little bigger, bigger picture.
Bigger picture. I, I motioned, like, or, well, not motioned, but like, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Etheridge, and I'm, I'm the one that's been up the longest than anybody in the room, and I'm the one that's going to be up there earliest tomorrow morning, which is fine, because I signed up for it, and I'll pick up Commissioner Beaumont in the morning.
I'll be ready.
Can I ma, can I mean, can I make a motion to, can I make a motion that we table this to the first meeting in July, after the school board votes? Table it, whatever, what's, I don't know, the date, July?
20th. July 20th.
Yeah, we.
Is that, is that, do we not have one, or, yeah, because it's July 1st.
We're not having one on the 6th, yeah, because of the fourth.
Can I move that we table it till July 20th, till we get the stuff back from the school? I guess, well, what a very good motion.
That's all I got to do.
That's, that's my motion, that we table it to the, to the first meeting in July.
Okay. We have a second?
And, and that's to, so we can get the.
Till we hear with the, the feedback from the school, and then, like you said, that puts, puts them in more of the, behind the, behind the driver's seat as well, of if they're saying they have this, you know, I mean, it's kind of like, I don't know.
Well, it also allows Dr. Lutz, what, Lutz to find.
Lutz.
To.
Lutz on the ground.
Right, not be thrown in the fire for a week, literally, on this, and, although they're going to take a vote in two days, so it doesn't really matter, but, yeah, so do we, anyone want to second that?
I'll second it.
We have a second, be for the discussion.
Just to confirm, we would come back on the.
The old business on the 20th.
Just to vote on this.
Yep.
Well, no, right.
For action.
We could have some discussion, but then vote.
Public comment's been closed.
No, 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 I was Commissioner.
Yeah, public comment's been closed, we can talk about it, I'm sure a motion will be put forth, there'll be discussion about the terms and conditions in that motion, whichever way it goes, and we'll go from there, ostensibly, if, if Kevin's motion passes.
And then, to them, we'll have your feedback to schools if they're calling.
Right, and time to chew on this for a little while, so we might. So, with that being said, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
So, the ayes have it, we will be back on this one in a couple weeks. And with that, so moved. Thank you, I want to say thank you guys for toughening it out with us, we appreciate it.
Well, thank y'all for staying, we made it so late, because we know y'all have been waiting for a while to get through the process, so.
I appreciate it, honestly.
Yeah.
4:15, I'll pick it, who, anybody up who wants to do a rattle tomorrow?
Drive safely, James. Wait a minute, wait a minute. We have to adjourn.
Oh, you did?
You moving to adjourn, right?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.